But you'll see where Arizona is and pretty much all the way around us, the dark blue, meaning the 40,000 or more cases. So in Arizona, these are numbers as of today, we are up to 199,459 cases. Maricopa County, we're at 132,434 cases, and we are sitting at 4,896 deaths in Arizona. And these are just the rates by county and kind of color-coded, of course, the darker they get, the hotter they are, the higher the population case rates are, and same for case counts. And what we would expect to see here is what we're seeing really is that Maricopa County, being the largest county, is going to have obviously the lion's share of the cases in Arizona. And then we see some of the cases per 100,000 really red up in this Apache-Navajo area, where they had some of their early outbreaks, if you remember, on their sovereign nations up there. So here's a little bit more specific information for Maricopa County. This is our 132,000 cases, kind of broken down, that we've seen 11% hospitalized, 1% in the ICU, 2% deaths. Long-term care facilities have really been a win in Arizona for Maricopa County. Over 52% of our long-term care facilities that did have an outbreak have now gone 28 days without a new onset case. And so for us in epidemiology, that's what we consider when an outbreak is over, is when you go two incubation periods without a new case. And 200 of our long-term care facilities have actually hit this target, so they are no longer experiencing an outbreak in them. This also goes over the age breakdown and demographics, and you all can have a copy of this presentation afterwards if it would be helpful for you. But we really started seeing this 20- to 44-year-old age group really jump out with numbers. They, especially when the things opened up in mid-June, early-June I should say, that I think that age group was just tired of being at home and went out and were very social, and we saw numbers really spike quite drastically in this age group in particular. There has been national trends that the 0- to 19 age group has increased significantly over the past few months. We've seen a slight increase here in Maricopa County, nothing significant. They've seen a little bit larger of an increase in Pima County, our partners to the border, to the south of us, but we have seen a slight increase in the 0- to 19 age group. And we're really just contributing that again to more parents, as more businesses open and they're going out into the workplace and out into the community. Kids' sports started back up fairly early on here in Arizona, so those numbers didn't surprise us or alarm us too much in Maricopa County. The other thing that I'll touch on quickly, well, we'll get to it in a couple slides, is just our death rates and those numbers and what you've probably heard recently in the news. So this is what we refer to a lot as our EpiCurve. This curve just tells us what trend we're seeing and if we're headed in the right direction. The great thing to note here is, right here is the date, June 20th, that our Board of Supervisors implemented a county-wide mask mandate. And you will see, two weeks after that, we saw the peak in cases, which is what we were expecting in public health, and ever since then, we've seen a nice steady decline. We've really been a success story nationally, and I've had many, many health departments reaching out over the past few weeks, asking us what we implemented and what we did. And I can tell you, the biggest thing is policies in place to help mitigate some of these public health concerns. So this is just the EpiCurve from the beginning of when the outbreak started here in Maricopa County and where we're at right now. This light gray area, that's really what we say is not finalized data yet. We still have reports coming in, so until the bars turn this darker gray color, we call them, that's just kind of forecasting what we expect and where the trend of the curve, we continue to see the curve go. What we're seeing right now is great, it's exactly where we want to be. There is tomorrow, you will probably start hearing in the news, if you haven't already today, Maricopa County, Pinellas County, and Pima County will all have hit the matrix to allow certain businesses to start reopening. So you'll start hearing movie theaters have started to reopen, and in addition, some of the restaurants that had restrictions on them and those sorts of things, the water parks, gyms. And so with that, it's going to be really important for public health. We'll keep our eye on this trend and hope that it continues to decline or really level off and stay where it's at and not creep back up again. We really, at all costs, want to avoid getting back up here to where we were at our peak. This is our hospital utilization in Maricopa County. As you will see, it's the same sort of thing we saw with our EpiCurve. With hospitalizations, we expect when we see our spike in cases, a couple weeks after our spike in cases, which was right around in here, that we're going to see a spike in hospitalizations, which is exactly what happened. And just like our numbers have trended, started to go downward, so have all the hospitalization numbers and rates, meaning that there's more capacity in our hospitals, there are more ventilators available, there are more ICU beds available, and medical surgical beds available. So again, this is all really good news for Arizona and Maricopa County. And this really is a domino effect on everything, so when you see our numbers initially increase, then you'll see the hospitals increase, and then unfortunately, you're going to see the deaths increase. So if you remember back here, this was early July that we were seeing this, and this was late-June that we were seeing the high numbers. So it was middle of July that we started really seeing our peak in our deaths. And for Maricopa County, we had a lot of national attention for ordering those portable coolers. And just to explain those a little bit, the medical examiner's office does not really take in COVID-related deaths. That's not an indicator for a body to be sent to the medical examiner. However, it's an entire system, so when our medical examiner is finished with their examination of a body, they call to a funeral home for final disposition. And we have certain funeral homes on contract with Maricopa County. And when our medical examiner reached out to those funeral homes, they were at capacity, and they could not take in any more bodies. And so what that meant was that, at one point, our medical examiner had nearly 60 bodies that were ready for final disposition, but we had nowhere to send them. And that will put us into a crisis standard, which means that not all deaths that would typically qualify for the medical examiner are able to be examined and brought in if there's nowhere to put them. So that's when we ordered the additional coolers. We did end up using those, they're not in use anymore. Part of what we also did was really start to peel back the layers of that system, of the funeral system, and see where there were barriers, what was holding up the process, what we could do to help with that. And we started doing that. Part of that is expanding who the county is working with to take in bodies for final disposition. Another part was, the county has started a new program that's to help with those that are in financial need of assistance for final disposition of a loved one. As we all know, there's been people that have been negatively affected in their income and their jobs, and so some families just simply didn't have the means when losing a loved one during this time for final disposition. So the county has now set up a program that individuals can apply for assistance to help with that. We also worked with our funeral homes to see what barriers they were having. They were having difficulty getting hold of physicians to do a certification of a death, and so you can't do final disposition until the death is certified. And so we also provided some staff to help with that process. So things luckily in that world have started to have the throughput again that we're a little bit used to, although overall, we have had more deaths in 2020 than we did in 2019, and that's a whole different presentation, but they are not all COVID-related. So getting into what we're really here about, the meat of what we're going to discuss, is the benchmarks for schools. And as you are aware, ADHS came up with three benchmarks for school districts to consider when you are making recommendations and decisions about when to bring your students back into classrooms and when to bring your teachers back on campus. So the three benchmarks they came up with are cases, percent positivity, and COVID-like illness. And they have them in these three categories, substantial, moderate, and minimal. When you're in the substantial category, they ask that you continue only virtual learning options. When you're at the moderate, they recommend that you can go to a combination of virtual and in-person in-class learning. And then when you were at the green, the minimal, they say it's safe to bring your students back on campus. The caveat that I'll say here with minimal is that as long as we're in a pandemic mode, the minimal would always include measures to socially distance as much as possible and ask staff and students to wear face masks when at all possible. And this information is on the ADHS website. So when we break this down by county, when we look at Maricopa County, which is how ADHS gives this data and this information, they go back 12 days to the previous two weeks. So when you look for Maricopa County, and this probably could be updated by a week, these were put together last Friday, tomorrow, it can be updated. You see for this week, we were still in Maricopa County at 135 cases per 100,000, which puts us in the red for substantial. However, we moved into the right direction in this week, and you'll see the week after this that's coming up, we're also going to be in the yellow for Maricopa County, meaning that we will have hit by next week, the two weeks where we're in the moderate spread here, meaning that ADHS would recommend going to some sort of in-person and virtual learning combination. When we look at the second benchmark, which is the percent positivity, there's a few things I want to point out. This is all available on the Arizona Department of Health Services website. There's three arrows here. This green arrow is the latest arrow, but we're not going to say that arrow is finalized because it just ended the 22nd. Reports are still coming into public health and to the state from labs, and so that's not going to be really final until next week. So what we're looking at again are these two numbers right here, the 8.7 and the 6%, which with the 8.7 and the 6%, they do fall in the moderate category. The caveat to that is that ADHS has asked that school districts do not bring students back until there's two weeks at 7% or below. And that's really because they know that if you're at 8%, it's not going to take long. We expect there to be cases when kids come back to class and they start to come back and socialize together, and so they feel that being too close to that 10% is going to bump you up into this category a little too quickly. So, but again, I expect by next week, these will both be in that yellow category. So this information again is available on ADHS website. This number here that you'll see does not coincide with these, this is because this is an overall since the beginning of the pandemic, and these are weekly percent positivity So there was a question that was asked about, why is there different percent positivity rates depending on what website you'd look at? So I can't speak to how Johns Hopkins or some of those other websites are coming up with percent positivity. I can only speak to Arizona Department of Health Services and MCDPH, which is Maricopa County Department of Public Health. We actually use the same methodology as ADHS. If you see any differences in the data, it's simply going to be because of how we break down that information. So the state is only breaking it down by county, so we'll go over in just a second Maricopa County's overall rates. But when we formed our work group with the superintendents, we heard from those superintendents that it would be more helpful to have the data not only by county but also available, broken down further. And so what our department did was take that data and we geocoded all of the information, and we were able to break it down by school district, city, and zip code. So if you see any differences, it's just on how we geocoded and we're able to break down that information even further. But our department and ADHS are using the same numbers. Some of the outside agencies, universities that you've seen make some modeling and predictions about percent positivity and some of the national ones, they actually are, they do not have access to our medical record system and our electronic lab reporting system, so all of those are based on modeling. So if you see differences, and it's not from numbers from us or the state, it's because they're based on numbers that they've gotten from other ways, but we're the only two departments that have access to the electronic lab reporting system, and that's just all legal Arizona administrative code reasons that that is that way. So this is the Maricopa County data dashboard. This is the website for it. Again, as I mentioned, our data is broken down by zip code, school district, and city. And the only information we're not able to break down any further than the county level is the COVID-like illness. That is because this is actually on only three levels in Arizona, it's northern Arizona, central region, and southern region. It's surveillance data, so it's not something that is reportable by all hospitals, it's just surveillance that we pull to do epidemiological surveillance for COVID and influenza. So all of the central region in Arizona is all in green for COVID-like illness for us. So that's the only benchmark you will not see broken down. We'll always show it, but it'll be the same no matter what you choose to break it down by. It'll always be the same number, and that's why. So just today, I pulled the Chandler Unified School District, I pulled it by the district level, and when you go into the website, there'll be a drop-down arrow where you can pick how you want to see that data and that information. So I did it by your school district. When I pulled it up, you click on it, and it'll give an overall risk level and your overall recommended learning scenario. The important thing to know is you'll notice in two areas, you're actually in the green with the COVID-like illness. However, we're always going to do the overall risk at where you scored lowest. Same with the recommended learning scenario, we're always going to go lowest. So if you ever have even just one red, even if it's for two weeks prior, this'll show red, and this'll also show the just virtual learning. Okay? It would take all of these to be green, for this to show green, and no red, so it won't ever show red if you have that. So your, and then it'll also show you the data that we use for your benchmarks for the past two weeks. So two weeks ago, overall case rates for Chandler Unified School District were 74.7, that puts it in the moderate category. Percent positivity, 8.62, also puts it in the moderate category. And then for the most recent week of full data, the case rate was 63.19, the percent positivity was 6.38, and COVID-like illness was 3. Again, so what'll happen next week is this'll move up to week one, obviously, and there'll be a new week two. I think with that data, it's really looking like you are going to have another, or I'm sorry, this'll move down to week two, and you'll get a new week one. I said that opposite. Anyway, I think you'll have another week where you're below that 7% to go back to a hybrid model with in-person onsite and virtual classes. So this is what the Arizona Department of Health Services website will look like. If you look up information for Maricopa County, we are the only county in the state that's breaking down the data further than county level, so all the other counties are just providing it at this point anyway, just by county level. We're the only ones breaking it down by school district, zip code, and city. So for overall Maricopa County, it's showing that we're meeting two of the three benchmarks. The first benchmark is decline in cases, or, that's an or, less than 100 cases per 100,000 for two consecutive weeks. That's not met, however, the decline in cases is met, so it's giving us a green checkmark that that benchmark was met. Where it's saying we have not met the benchmark yet is here in our two consecutive weeks of percent positivity below 7%. So it still was showing in this timeframe, the 8.7 and a 10.9. Again, as soon as those get below the green and we'll get a, below the 7%, we'll get a green checkmark there. And then the last one is the COVID-like illness below 10%, and again, we've met that, we've been meeting that for a little while. So one of the other things that schools have reached out to us with a lot of questions about is this waiver for onsite services. I know it's caused quite a lot of confusion of what students to bring back for those onsite services and what that looks like. We, you know, per the governor's executive order, schools had to start offering on August the 17th, free onsite learning opportunities and support services for students who needed them. And also per this waiver, you had to get a health department in conjunction with the state health department to advise that closing an entire district was necessary due to an outbreak. And so you're going to hear a few times the word outbreak used, and unfortunately, it's not the same definition. There's a different definition for outbreaks in the two scenarios we're going to talk about. In this particular scenario for an onsite service waiver, we had a lot of requests, and we had to think about, because the other outbreak we're going to talk about in just a minute is for an outbreak at a school. But this criteria was for public health to determine there was an outbreak in a district. And the way that we decided to determine this was to look at the case rate for the zip codes and the district, and if it is two times the county case rate, then we would issue a school waiver. And this last part, we found out just a little while ago, is, it's void. ADE actually put in their waiver, because they're the ones that ultimately issue the waiver, the waiver's valid for 30 days. We were trying to give a benchmark at which the waiver would, you know, you would no longer be in that status of saying there's an outbreak, but ADE kind of did it for us. So what would happen after 30 days is you'd have to come back to public health and have us look at your information to see if your district met that qualification for a waiver. And what the waiver does is it allows you to not offer those onsite services because there is an outbreak happening. So we've received, I think about 10 requests for waiver, these are the ones that have been granted in conjunction with ADHS. What happens is the school will initially approach local public health, we will look at the data and information and determine whether we agree with writing a waiver, and if we do, we will send that information to Arizona Department of Health Services, who typically concurs with our findings, and that goes to ADE. ADE has also indicated that if local public health and state public health recommend a waiver, that they are going to grant it. They aren't going to deny any that are recommended by local public health. So here's what's been recommended and issued in Maricopa County. So we know that a lot of schools have asked if they could provide testing in their school, and that it's a challenge for children, especially children without symptoms to get tested. So the CDC, I want to be clear, and we've shared this with all school districts, is the CDC does not recommend routine testing of staff and students, and they, but they do recommend testing those who are exposed to confirmed COVID-19 cases. The CDC actually came out with new recommendations yesterday for testing that has a lot of public health, state, and local scratching their heads and thinking how we're going to move forward. They are now recommending, similar to early on in the outbreak, that only symptomatic individuals or individuals who have been exposed to a known positive case receive testing. So ADHS yesterday shared with us, they're not sure how that's going to affect the messaging that's been happening in Arizona. We've really been encouraging anyone who wants to know their status to go get tested, but the CDC changed their recommendations just yesterday. So at this point, we're still recommending anyone that wants to get tested should seek and go get testing, but if you hear that from any parents or anybody, any teachers, that the CDC recommends something different, they are right now, and that was effective yesterday. So late last week, ADHS also signed into place an emergency measure, and according to this emergency measure, every school, childcare, and shelter, by these definitions here, have to submit a report to local public health if there is an outbreak identified at a school. And so here's where the other outbreak definition comes into play. And an outbreak is defined as two or more laboratory confirmed cases among students, children, residents, or staff with onset within 14-day period who are, we call, Epi-linked, which means they don't share a household and were not identified as close contacts for each other in another setting during the standard case investigation. So it means that somehow these cases, when the initial case gave it to the second case, but it's not because they live together or because of some other reason that we can identify, those would be considered Epi-linked, and that's when an outbreak would occur in a school. And we are used to this with working with our school partners for a lot of public health communicable diseases that are reportable to public health when there's an outbreak. So this is not new, it's just COVID is new to this process. So what will happen when COVID cases are identified in a school? So when they are identified, this is a lot of words, but I tried to break it down a little bit and by a process here, but all cases are contacted by public health. We reach out and we do an investigation with those cases. If the case lets us know, or we find out that the case is a student or attends a school or any setting where there are what we consider like congregate, close contacts of individuals, we will reach out to that school. We usually, we have for all schools a point of contact, typically it's a school nurse. If a school does not have a school nurse, it's usually a school administrator. We'll reach out to that individual, we'll share pertinent information about who our case is and start working with them to identify what classrooms that student is in and who they sit next to, who they could have potentially exposed. And then we will work with the school to send out communication to families and give recommendations on who should stay home and isolate and for how many days that were close contacts with that case. And then close contacts, here's kind of the definition of that. Close contacts are, we are determining to be anyone who is less than six feet away from a case for longer than 10 minutes. And the student who is positive will need to quarantine at home for 14 days, the students who were close contacts, I should say, for 14 days following the last exposure to the case. And this communication should be done by the school, but public health does provide guidance and a letter template to communicate this to students and their parents. Close contacts who are teachers are considered part of the essential workforce, they can continue to work if needed, as long as they remain asymptomatic, meaning they're not coughing, they're not any of those things that are associated with COVID, as long as they're asymptomatic and they have a face covering on at all times while they're on school campus. So, and these are just if there's a case. That's different if there's an outbreak. So if there's an outbreak, we will typically be notified from the school that they've heard reports. It could also be that public health has identified because we've gotten reports from several students and we've identified they're in the same school. We start trying to link them and see if there's an Epi-Link. We'll typically reach out to the school early on to see if these are going to be considered We will always assist in developing the communication and templates, letters to be used. And if there's ever a recommendation that the outbreak is so large that there, we think you should close the school, we will let the school administrator know that. We've had a lot of people ask what would determine that, closing a school. Unfortunately, we're trying to come up with something where we can list all the things that would be considered, but it's not just an easy checklist. You all know probably better than anyone we try to describe this to. Every school is different and every school is unique. So if you have a small elementary school with only a couple hundred students on it, if you're seeing, you know, 50, 60 students with respiratory issues, we're probably going to say you should close that school down. However, if it's a large high school with, you know, 4,000 students, and maybe even then it's 50 students, we would say like, are they in different grades? Or do they have any sort of interaction together? If not, we'd probably say you're probably okay to continue operating. So a lot of it depends on what the school day looks like, how many interaction there is between grade levels, how much interaction there is between the students and staff. You know, charter schools obviously going to be a lot different too, when they're very small. So it goes on and on, all the things that we consider. But we definitely would work closely with school administration if we were going to make a recommendation that they close the school for an outbreak. There was also a question about contact tracing. Public health, again, will work with the point of contact at the school to determine who those close contacts were of a case when they are positive. The school point of contact will be given a line list, which is really just a form of contact information to fill out for us for those contacts. And we will work with that point of contact again to send out guidelines to all of those who were exposed of how long that they should ice, quarantine at home. We will also work with the case who's positive, and typically their parents in the case of a student when they're a minor, but for them to notify close contacts outside of school, which is the way we handle any of our case investigations right now in public health. So we wouldn't be relying on the school to do contact tracing. I think the question mentioned some of the media attention that's gone on about contact tracing and what capabilities the department has. We, early on in June, had ramped up to be able to investigate, which is different from contact tracing. Case investigations are usually typically done by a nurse epidemiologist or an epidemiologist, have lots of years of training and experience, and they take a little bit longer to do an investigation. It's once we do an investigation that we get contacts, and those contacts are then what we call contact tracing. A lot of our system in Maricopa County and Arizona has been automated using a SARA Alert system. We've gotten a lot of national attention and praise for that system. We contracted with the Crisis Response Network, AZ211, to handle that part of our investigation. So they're helping out with us. And so far they are, certainly have room to expand and for capacity. They have not been overwhelmed with the amount of contacts we've had come in. So here's, we're getting towards the end here. I just put some common questions, some of them that came through, that I wanted to go over with all of you to maybe answer before we get to the official questions. But there was a question about pool testing. And right now, we're not recommending pool testing for anything in Arizona. Part of the problem with pool testing, when you still see us at, you know, the World Health Organization and CDC really say that you have fairly, what you would call community spread, when you're anywhere over 5%. So when you're in a community where you're seeing that sort of percent positivity and community spread, doing pool testing almost creates more work and more time. Because imagine if you pool 100 of those tests together, if even one comes back positive, then you have to go back and test each person individually. So pool testing makes a lot of sense when you're in a community that has very, very little spread happening. So you're rapidly going through big batches of tests and they're all negative, all negative, all negative. And then maybe, you know, one in 10 or 20 batches ever comes back with a positive, and then you'd have to, again, individually test each of those. So we're not recommending any pool testing in Arizona, and certainly not for schools to go back to in-person classes. The other thing was asking about what the current data says about transmission in adults to children, children to adults. Certainly, there have been new articles and new research published telling us and showing that the viral RNA, which is really just how much virus is in a person, that there's a lot of viral load in little ones, in children, school-age children. And what we do know for sure is that regardless of the age, your viral load is very high with COVID in the first two days of illness. And typically, when your viral load is highest, is when you're most infectious and contagious. So what, what, there has been other research to show that children are more effective spreaders of this. It's not a perfect indication of how they've looked at this information. And, and I will just tell you that, like with many things with COVID-19, because this is a novel virus, it's the first time any of us are experiencing, experiencing it. We're going to have a lot more data once we're done with all of this than when we're trying to, you know, put the training wheels on the bike as we ride it. So there is some evidence showing, however, that children, probably because they're more likely to be mild and asymptomatic, could be more likely to spread. But we don't know if that's because of how the viral RNA is living in their system. We actually believe it's probably more because of that asymptomatic, that they're around hugging and, you know, playing and touching, and they don't seem ill. So they're spreading it, and they're not sick in bed with a fever and, and those sorts of things. So it's probably for public health where we're thinking it's more likely that they're saying children are spreading it more easily. It's probably more asymptomatic spread. But again, there's not a lot of great data out there that we can really point to that.
Ms. Flanagan, I'm sorry. Can you just go back to the, the pool testing, the slide before this one?
Yeah.
Can you just restate that again? Because I seem to have gotten confused as to what you're saying. In terms of 5%?
Okay, so with pool testing, what it does is it takes a whole bunch of tests and runs them at the same time. So it'll take, you know, I just used 100. Every machine is set up different. It'll run 100 tests at a time. And as long as nothing comes back positive in those 100 tests, you can get through obviously more tests if you're doing it 100 at a time versus one at a time. When you have low community transmission, which is what the CDC and World Health Organization are really are saying, less than 3 to 5%, pool testing makes a lot more sense because you're less likely to get a positive case. When your, when your rate of positivity goes up, it means you're more likely that every pool you do has at least one positive in it. So then you're having to run, not only did you run them as a pool, you're going to have to run them individually. Does that make sense? And then there were some questions about the air quality standards, ventilation. This is more of an expertise question of my colleagues at Environmental Services. So I like to let the experts speak to things, but I can tell you from public health standpoint, we're really following and pointing individuals to the CDC website for any recommendations on ventilation. But I can just give you a brief of what it says. It really says that, you know, most schools are already equipped in our country, in our world with ventilation. It makes sense if there's ever opportunities to put HEPA filters or change filters more often. That's a good thing. But overall, these are the in-depth guidelines and recommendations for increasing ventilation. They talk about some things that wouldn't make sense in Arizona, leaving windows open, doors open. That doesn't always make sense here. And that's the end of my presentation. Here's our website, has lots of information available. I'd recommend you check it out if you haven't already. And then that's our public hotline for anybody that has questions can call and ask that hotline number.
Thank you so much, Ms. Flanagan. We really appreciate your presentation. It, a lot of it makes sense. And, and I'm really glad that you have gone through and explained the, the issue of, a lot of people have thought that once we're in that yellow zone, that it's like, oh, you can open hybrid, but we have to reach that threshold first of the 7% before a hybrid model could be considered, and then move forward from there. So I'm sure that we have a lot of questions from the board. So who would like to start? Mr. Evans?
Okay.
Okay. Let's start with you.
Ms. Flanagan, thank you so much for being here today.
Of course.
And for sharing this very detailed information. And it was not long at all.
Okay.
So thank you. It was actually really helpful. Since everybody else gets a chance, so that everybody else gets a chance. Let me just, you've been doing this work for 20, 20-odd years, right?
Mm-hmm.
You're very experienced in how this works in not just this county, but in another county.
Right.
So from your perspective, when a child presents illness during the day, and I, and I realize this may come from other people in the room too, but I'd just like to see how, how you'd counter what they have to say. Knowing, knowing when a child gets sick and they go to the nurse, or they tell their teacher they need to go to the nurse, and they go in, in this environment, it could be one of 20 different things, right? But if a lot of the symptoms match, we're not set up to do testing. So what does the procedure look like to you? And how many days? Because what I saw was like 14 days. What does it look like when, when that child is, seems to be maybe a little bit symptomatic, fits the, fits the criteria?
Right.
How does, how do we then go from the nurse's office to a recommendation from public health?
Yeah.
That, you know, that, you know, so that you take identification of that child in that situation?
So what I would recommend, really, and that would be in a school setting, childcare setting, any, any setting similar to that, is if you're had a, have a child presenting, COVID unfortunately does have symptoms that are very similar with seasonal flu, with a cold, even allergy season, which is really fun. But, you know, having a healthcare professional like a registered nurse able to do an assessment, or any healthcare professional, to really be able to know that child well enough in their medical records to know, do they have seasonal allergies? Do they have anything else going on? Just ask some basic questions. Obviously, the younger they are, the more they're going to have to involve mom or dad with that. But in, in any circumstance, I would say some of the main triggers, having a fever, just like with most things, you would send the child home. And from the public health standpoint, we would recommend that the parent either take the child to get testing, or that they stay out until they're symptom-free if they don't get tested. So the 14 days is really when you know you have a positive test. So unless somebody has a positive test, we don't know what their status is. So similar to what we've said to other individuals is if you're sick, stay home. That's really the message that I would ask parents to as much as possible. I know it's hard when parents have jobs and whatnot to, to keep their children home when they're sick. But if they're sick, I would really put some strong policies in place to recommend keeping children home. And then what measures you take beyond that would really be up to all of you as the board to decide. But we've seen other schools that are taking temperatures when, when kids come into school, are doing, you know, some general health assessments with students as they come onto campus. I think anything like that is, is certainly reasonable and would make sense.
Okay. So then the first thing that triggers in my mind with, with my kid when he was seven years old, and I can never remember, is it Advil or is it Tylenol, you know, to get, knock this, knock the fever down, if that's one of the symptoms. But then, I guess the real question is, we don't have the capability to handle the follow-through. That, so if a nurse works with a child, says you probably, with the parents, you need to get tested, that's kind of where it ends for us, isn't it? I mean, we don't have any way to make sure that that next, those next steps happen.
Right. And, you know, I think that Tylenol and those sorts of things are only going to work a little bit. It's going to be hard for a parent. I, I think what you're getting at is, if you're telling the parent, you know, they need to stay home. If you don't want to get them tested, they need to stay home until they're symptom-free. If you're kind of saying they could give them some Tylenol and then send them on the school bus, of course, that could happen. I don't think it's going to, the other symptoms are going to start to set in. And so you're going to start to see some other things going on with that child. And then, again, I think it's a school policy on whether you, you know, actually exclude a child and say they can't come back for a certain amount of days because of the symptoms they presented with. And that's certainly something that other schools across the country have done, where if a, a child does present with any symptoms, especially a fever, they are just from the get-go saying, if you don't take them to get COVID-tested, you don't have to. But they are excluded from school for the next X amount of days. And again, that would be a school, board, school decision.
Ms. Love, do you have questions?
Yes, thank you. I don't know if you can hear me because I'm mic-covered up, sorry. But I need you to unpack something here for me. So there's a lot of data that says that children are asymptomatic spreaders, even though we don't know conclusively yet, right? But then the CDC is recommending that we only test symptomatic people. And then on top of that, they're not recommending that we test all children for them to be able to go back to school. So it just feels really conflicting. I don't know. Can you unpack that for me?
I can attempt to unpack it for you, but you're saying all the things out loud that was in my head yesterday when the new recommendations came out. And I think the same things that we were on the call, a call with Arizona Department of Health Services and all 15 local health officers that are in the same position as I am, were on that phone call. And we were all asking the same thing. How does this make sense as we start to send students back to school and with asymptomatic spread? And I don't know that I can unpack it, except to say that our recommendations at this point are not changing for Arizona. We're still recommending that, especially if anyone's been a, a close contact or been somewhere and they, they don't know for sure that a person was positive, but it appeared to be, or just any reason in general that someone would like to go get tested, that they should go get tested. I think that's another reason as well, when you point out asymptomatic, that public health really is recommending as much as possible that you socially distance students, and when you can't, that they all have masks on. Because that's what's really going to help with that asymptomatic spread and ensuring that, that if they are asymptomatic, they're not spreading it to others. Because, you know, that goes back to Mr. Evans, your point as well, is when the students present with a fever. But we, we know that even in children and adults, there's asymptomatic spread happening. So that's why the mask is so important, is because people are out doing their daily business, are out doing things and are spreading it without even knowing it.
So let's say hypothetically, we decide to decrease testing to the CDC standards. If we're decreasing testing, wouldn't that automatically impact our benchmarks and not give us an accurate indicator for if we're in red versus yellow versus green?
Yeah. So certainly anytime we're only testing individuals that are symptomatic and most likely positive, obviously, our positivity rate is going to go up. So it's going to affect that. I think that's why Arizona, the Department of Health Services has chosen not to start moving in that direction with CDC. I think it would take quite a bit of effort and conversations at the governor and, and state ADE, ADHS level to discuss that, because it will absolutely affect our benchmarks. And we would have to consider other benchmarks, because if you're only testing positive people who are sick and more likely to be positive, it's going to affect our benchmarks. So I don't think the current benchmarks would make a lot of sense if we started testing in that manner.
Okay. And then demographically, where are we focusing our testing efforts? Like, we know, you know, that our children of color or people of color in our less affluent neighborhoods are more at risk of getting COVID. Are we focusing testing in those areas? Or, I mean, because here, we had testing at Hamilton High, which is in a more affluent area predominantly white. But then down the street is Chandler High, which I'm told that those zip codes around Chandler High are presenting as red. Are we focusing testing in the areas that we need to be focusing testing on to catch our, our students and our families who are more at risk?
Yeah, that's a great question. And thank you for asking that. I didn't cover it in my presentation. But absolutely, in public health, we, a few months back, released a request for proposal to bring on contractors that could do community-wide testing for us. We have a handful of contractors on board now. And we did prioritize testing based on exactly the things that you outlined. So we're looking at, we're really looking at town zip code data to determine when a place is considered a hotspot. And we're using that same, one of the metrics that I talked about for outbreak, two times higher the county rate. talked about for outbreak, two times higher than county rate. And when we identify those areas, we go in and do not only testing, but we are providing wraparound services. That means, in some cases, we've provided housing to help families who are multi-generational housing, living together, and of course, these are all things you're going to see in lower SES neighborhoods. So, we've also offered housing services, we've offered food services. There's a few hotspots in Maricopa County that we're working with. One of them was successful, that we brought the numbers back to where they're not a hotspot anymore, but unfortunately, we do have a few that we're still working with that we did identify as hotspots, and that's all with our surveillance data that comes in, and we, we really have to be diligent on making sure that that's the areas we're targeting. We've had a lot of school districts and areas reach out and ask us to do testing. I know the testing you're talking about at Hamilton High, I think that was through the governor's office. He set up a few testing sites throughout the state, and Hamilton High happened to be one of them. But we've had several school districts and areas reach out, and really, we're using our resources, we're trying to get more contractors on board, but at this point, it's important for us to prioritize, and that's how we're prioritizing.
Okay. And I had one more question, and I can't remember. Oh, let's say you are in an area that's less affluent, I work with access populations, transportation is a barrier to even get to the test. So, is there a way of creating kind of like a mobile testing center to kind of go to families who don't have the transportation to get to the place where they need to be tested?
Yeah, so that's what our community testing does, is we work in that area and try to set up at either a location that's really convenient for families just to walk to, or be at in their neighborhood. And in one of the other hotspot areas, we actually did work with ASU and Native Health Center, who went door-to-door and offered testing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. McGee, did you have any questions?
Yes, thank you. Thank you very much for your very informative presentation. We appreciate you being here tonight. And my question is, I know that there are some school districts within Maricopa County who have opened some charters in some public schools, and I know it's probably early, but do we have any feedback from them as to how it's been going, if they've reported any cases?
So, in the schools so far that were open and had staff back, we had a few staff that were cases. In the charter schools that have opened, I haven't had any cases in the school district that did. We had a case. There's not an outbreak yet at any of those locations. You're welcome.
I don't think Mrs. Brunner's quite ready yet, so I'll go ahead. So, as we look, we've been hearing in the news a little bit about ASU students and some of the parties and masklessness and other things, and they came out recently with, they finally released some of their test results, positive test results the other day. Where are those students being geocoded to? Are they being, because we know a lot of students are, from ASU, are from this area that go and choose to live in the dorms. So, are they being coded back to their original zip codes, or are they being coded to the campus?
They're being geocoded to wherever they're living. So, if they're living on campus, they'll be geocoded to campus. If they're living at home, or spend a significant amount of time at home, they'll be geocoded to home address.
Okay, because I know when we, when we went out to the Hamilton testing, they were, they were coding us by our driver's license, okay? And most of these kids, if they're utilizing, you know, their driver's licenses, hoping, you know, they have those. But then it would be definitely back to their, their original home address.
Yeah, when we get a lab result, typically, we just get a name and a phone number. Sometimes we get the address, but as soon as we talk to the individual, we ask them where they're staying. Many times, we'll have individuals whose driver's license are from a different state, but they're actually living here in Arizona, or individuals that were tested in Maricopa County, but live in a different county, and those cases are transferred back to their home county of where they live. And same with cases that are here from out of state, if they're traveling back to their home state within any close amount of time, there are also, we transfer those cases to other states as well. So, if there were any ASU students that were tested at Hamilton, even if they used their driver's license, and they ended up being positive when we reached out and did our case investigation, if they indicate that they're living on campus, that's how they would be geocoded.
And is that another reason why sometimes we see some daily fluctuations in data where there's subtractions taken out of various areas and others added in?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, and the other thing for Maricopa County that's a little unique, because we are 60% of Arizona's population, sometimes, unfortunately, a lab test is sent in that just has a name and a phone number, we are the default county. So, for everyone that doesn't have a county associated with them, they're defaulted to Maricopa County until our investigators call them and have a conversation with them and learn that they are actually not Maricopa County, and then they're reassigned to the appropriate area. So, that's some of the fluctuation you see as well. Same with deaths, sometimes that happens. They're defaulted to Maricopa County, and we will get them into the right county or state that they're associated with.
Now, some schools are looking at fever screening, or temperature screenings, for students and staff as, as kind of the screening tool to determine whether they are healthy enough to come onto campus. And I guess the question I have is, how often is a fever present in COVID so that it would actually be an effective screening tool versus how often, I mean, obviously, two days prior to them getting symptoms, of which a fever is one of them, they're still contagious? So, can you kind of maybe talk about how the pros and cons of fever screening?
Yeah, so fever screening, certainly, there are some of the symptoms of COVID that are highly associated with COVID, there's others that are less likely. Fever is definitely highly associated, so I don't think it's a bad initial screening tool, but again, it's difficult when there's asymptomatic spread with anything to solely rely on temperatures. But the majority of cases, and I don't know the exact percent, I can get that to you, but the majority of cases do have a fever and a cough, and we've also heard that quite a few cases have a loss of smell and taste.
Okay. And I guess my last question is, as we start talking about the communication between the child, the family, and the health department and the school, okay? We're seeing the reporting information that the schools have to report if there's cases on campuses, but doesn't the health department already know since those COVID tests have been reported, and they're probably going to know about it before we even do?
Well, that's the interesting with, thing with a lot of communicable diseases, and I know you have a nurse here that could probably speak to that, but sometimes, we don't know before you do. And how that can be the case, it could be that a parent takes a student to a rapid test site, say Walgreens or a CVS, where they're getting back a rapid antigen test, and they get it within 15 minutes, and they find out it's positive, and they call the school right away. We typically don't get those reported. They take a few days before they get reported into the CVS system, which transfers the data over to the ADHS system, which transfers it down to the county system. So, it doesn't take long, a couple of days, but sometimes the school actually knows about a case a day or two before we do. And then there's, are times when families have traveled, and they have the testing done out of state, and then they'll call the school and let them know. So, they're, it's not as often, but there's definitely times that the school knows before we do. Or the school will definitely start seeing an increase in respiratory illnesses, and they'll give us a heads-up, that they think something's going on. A lot of students, there's high absenteeism, and they all seem to be saying they're all having the same sort of symptoms. So, it's things like that as well, that we work closely with the schools too, and we rely on them to notify us.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mrs. Brunner?
First, I wanted to thank you for coming. I'm sure you are ridiculously busy, so thank you so much for being here. I had different categories of questions, so I'm going to start with testing questions. So, there's been things in the press about that all data is not included, and I was just curious what your take is on, you know, the news reports that say things that are faxed in aren't counted, or the things that are electronic, and does, has anyone done any studies on that to see if it actually affects the numbers at all? Are we pretty good if we don't count the faxed ones?
Yeah, so I can definitely tell you that. The large, large majority of all of our tests use the electronic lab reporting system. The ones that are faxed in are not enough to make a difference. The other thing that you've probably heard about, that I'll explain a little bit, is this new way that they say there's probable cases and confirmed cases, and we count them all as confirmed. And that's really was when the antigen testing became available. Early on in the pandemic, you'll remember, everyone had to get the nasal swab, the NP swab, which is horrible and no fun, and it's where they take the Q-tip and kind of touch your brain almost in your nasal. And the PCR tests are the gold standard. They are extremely sensitive and specific to COVID. When antigen rapid testing came out, everyone didn't really know how to classify those, because early on, they would send them for confirmatory testing to PCR. We no longer do that, because they have gotten to a place where they're, they're pretty reliable and pretty good, but they still consider those probable and not confirmed. However, the story I like to explain to people is, if any of you were extremely sick and went to Walgreens, CVS, and got a rapid test, and they said you're positive, I'm sure you wouldn't say, "I'm just a probable case." If you're sick in your bedroom, you're fevering, you have all these things, and the test came back and said you're probable, that's why we count them in our overall numbers. So, it really just is more of an epidemiology term between positive and confirmed, but we're all lumping them into our numbers. So, it's not, certainly not to increase what our numbers look like in Arizona, it's really to give a more accurate picture of really what's out there.
So, to kind of piggyback on what Ms. Love shared earlier, I was just wondering if we actually had data on how representative the sample is of our tests versus our population? So, are we seeing a discrepancy between, you know, are we getting truly a representative sample or not?
Yeah, we are getting a really good representative sample in Arizona, and we are seeing disproportionate numbers in our residents of color and our lower socioeconomic, and this is unfortunately in most communicable diseases in public health, it's the same sort of trend.
Okay. Sticking in that topic before you went to others, oh. So, can I just verify if I heard you correctly, that when someone tests positive, that's a college student? They are getting coded where they go to school, Tucson, Tempe, whatever? But if they are tested negative, we don't do follow-up to find out where they're going to college, we just code them as Chandler or Gilbert?
So, we don't code any of the negative cases. The state keeps all the negatives, we don't have them reported to us, there's just way too many.
But it would be like what Barb said, like their driver's license, or, right, they reported that?
Probably, because they wouldn't be, it would be whatever address they put on the paperwork they filled out when they got their lab report.
So, has that been considered at all, that we've got tens of thousands of young people, 18, 19, 20-year-olds, that are getting, when they're positive, getting coded to certain communities, and when they're negative, probably getting coded to where their families are from, where they grew up?
Yeah, I mean, we've looked at all of that, and it's really just not enough. There's not enough in either direction that's going to change our numbers. There may be tens of thousands of students, but there's not tens of thousands of students getting tested. I can tell you that, just given the numbers we're seeing. U of A actually did testing on all of their students that came on campus. ASU hasn't done something similar, and all of that information isn't what comes through public health that's part of our numbers, it's what they're doing on campus, especially those negative test results. They're not included in our overall numerators and denominators of where we're putting things. So, they will report when there's positive cases, but typically, the university is handling the investigation for those, and isolating and quarantining those individuals, but public health works with them, but really, the university is the lead on those cases.
Just to clarify, I have a child that goes to ASU, and she wasn't allowed to go on campus until she got tested and reported the results. So, I do think ASU is requiring it. I don't know about the follow-through, who knows? And so, do you think those tens of thousands of students going to ASU, U of A, NAU, that generally would not have any symptoms, are affecting in the last three or four weeks? Because they weren't told until like right before school start, a couple of weeks before school, so that you get this big wave? Is that going to be affecting the data that we're getting that are counting like three weeks ago?
Yeah, it hasn't affected it at all. As a matter of fact, I believe they're only, I would have to double-check on this, and I can let you know, but I believe they're only reporting their positive cases, not all the negative tests that they've run. So, we haven't seen a huge spike in our cases because of ASU, or U of A, or NAU coming back on campus, and the increases that we've seen in some communities, like in Pima County, wasn't a result of the university coming back on campus, it was a result of an outbreak in a prison system.
So, the students who got, I'm sorry to belabor this, but the students who got tested from their doctor at home, which is most of the kids, that still gets reported to the state, right?
Yep.
Okay. All right, so regarding the outbreak information that you shared with us, how, if at all, can we account for large overlaps between school communities and other communities if we're not going to call something an outbreak if they have connections? So, let's say half of a school goes to the same church, right? Or, you know, a third of a class is all in the same Boy Scout troop together. So, then, could it be possibly that that entire third of that, that class could have COVID-19 positivity rates, and we won't call that epidemiologically significant?
We would. Yeah, I guess I'm not following your question.
Well, you had said if they have a contact outside of school, then it doesn't count. And so, that's, I'm trying to figure out, how can we, as a school district, consider when there are significant chunks of a school that are connected outside of school? How can we look at that data? Because then they wouldn't qualify because they have other connections outside of school.
I'm so sorry, I'm still not understanding what you're asking.
Does anyone else understand what I'm asking?
Was that with the close contact? So, not contact tracing, but you had talked about close contacts, like when a child, well, that's not the right one.
When I say close contacts for defining an outbreak, it's a household. They live together, or they carpool together. Those aren't going to be, but if they're, it's because that they are in a Boy Scout troop together, or some other social thing like that, it's still going to be considered an outbreak in the school if they all go to the same school? Is that, does that answer what you were asking?
Yeah, I thought you had said otherwise, so I, sorry, I misunderstood that. Okay, thank you for clarifying that. And then, my other question is regarding teachers who are asymptomatic carriers. So, we're allowing them to be able to stay in the school even if, if they don't have symptoms. So, what percentage of adults do we see being asymptomatic carriers? What kind of risk does that policy place our children and our other staff members in if we allow teachers to stay on campus if they've been exposed? What does the percentage look like?
Right, so if they've been exposed, we don't know for sure that they're positive, but they could be. And the data is really all over the place. There's been rates as low as 10% asymptomatic, as high as 40, even 50% asymptomatic spread. So, again, I think that the data is pointing in a lot of different directions. What I do feel comfortable saying is, we know there's asymptomatic spread. To be able to put a percentage or a risk assessment level on asymptomatic and what we would be doing by allowing teachers to go in if they've been exposed, as long as they're wearing a mask, I can tell you that it's to a percentage that we, in public health, the CDC, World Health Organization feels safe, saying that they're okay to go back in a classroom and be on campus as long as they're wearing a mask.
And so, that data, was that gathered from case studies that we've looked at in hospitals where they have more appropriate PPE than, than schools do? Or like, where are we getting that data from that, that we are trusting that that's going to be safe? How have we figured that out?
Yeah, we get all of our data and information from the Centers for Disease Control. So, when they make a recommendation like that, that's the recommendation that we make. I would have to ask the CDC, we usually don't question them, on where they come up with their recommendations, and whose studies they're looking at, and whose data they're looking at. But when it's a CDC recommendation, that's what we follow.
Can I just, along that same line, just to interject just a little bit, but if that teacher tests positive and actually goes and gets a test, then that teacher will not be in the classroom?
Right.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that, because we were talking about asymptomatic, and if they, they test positive, but they continue to be asymptomatic, they're still going to be out of the classroom because they tested positive.
Yeah, and again, all the, as a school board, you can put any policy you want into place. If you believe that a teacher being a close contact and they're asymptomatic, again, these are just recommendations from public health, it's going to be up to the school and the school board of how you want to implement these at, at the district level.
Can I ask?
Can I ask? Oh, no, it's great. Can I ask, so after exposure, I've heard mixed numbers about how long it could take before the test shows up positive for someone. So they were exposed yesterday. Are we necessarily going to know today? Will their test come out positive? Or is there like a window of time we should be considering that the, the test should be given to make sure they're clear?
So we don't make any recommendations as far as if someone was exposed today, that we think their test results would not be positive today. Again, that's information, that's all because this is a new virus, but we know that symptom onset can be a few days prior and that's usually when you're most contagious is a few, two days prior to your symptom onset. So if you are actually exhibiting symptoms, that's better time than any to get tested.
But I guess I'm, I'm just asking when we have an exposure, I just would like to know like how we should make our policy to know how long we need to wait where it actually will show, there'll be enough load, viral load in that person to identify it.
We don't have recommendations on that. I mean, you could send someone right away. If they've been exposed to an individual, you could send them, you know, right away for testing. I mean, that's the thing with any of this antigen and PCR testing is it would be not recommended and very difficult to say you have to get tested every day. But essentially, if, if you put something in place like that, I would say if they have a negative test, even the next day, you would say they're negative. But you, because they could be negative three days later, four days later, and then somehow, some other way they were exposed and they come back, you know, they get a test five days later and they end up being positive. I mean, that's the difficult thing with any disease like COVID, the, the same thing's going to happen. What I can tell you is it's the first few days prior to onset that you're going to have the highest viral load. So I would say as soon as someone says that they are exposed to someone who was positive, if they're going to be positive, there's a likelihood it could be fairly soon within that timeframe.
And then I was just wondering clarification on a comment you made that in a high school of a couple thousand kids, did you say that if there are like 50 kids with respiratory symptoms of COVID, that you wouldn't close, recommend closing the school? Or did you refer to something?
I was just using an example. That's not, please don't use that as any metrics or anything. I'm just saying in proportion, when you look at a school that has a couple hundred kids and 50 are sick, it's a much different story than a school with 4,000 and 50 are sick. It's just, that's all I was saying. It's in proportion, it's numbers. I'm, you know, I think 50 is high no matter what it is. I just threw out 50, but 50 for anything would be concerning. But again, what I'm saying is we have to look at each of the schools differently based on the school population, the way the school's set up, how much interaction there is between students and their classes and, and the activities that they do.
So will we be getting some information on that at later as it gets more? No, okay.
There's, it's what I said earlier, that we can come up with a list of all the things we'll consider. But we've been very adamant that we're not going to come up with something that lists that because unfortunately people will say, "You said 50 of a 2,000," and, and that's just impossible for us to do in public health with something like COVID.
How do you plan on sharing cases and schools with the public?
We do not plan on releasing, we'll release similar to like we did early on with long-term care facilities, we'll release overall, you know, overall data and information, but we are not going to release any school-specific numbers or data. And that's how we handle all of our communicable diseases and we're protected with FERPA for doing that in public health unless governor's executive order or lawsuit or something says otherwise, we will not be releasing individual cases and, and what schools they go to.
Yeah, definitely not individual. I was just wondering, the entire school? There's no good data going to be out like this school of 4,400 kids has as many cases? Okay. Does the Department of Health have recommendations? I guess maybe you've answered this before indirectly. There, there's been back and forth and like soft language being used for recommendations for policies regarding procedures regarding PPE, separation space, mask wearing, et cetera. So are you guys just going with the CDC and having that, well, if possible, do this? Or is there actually like criteria that you would recommend?
Yeah, there's definitely criteria for certain situations and all of those are available on our website. You can see those. We have provided PPE to all schools for the nurses that are going to come into contact with potentially sick children. So all of that is covered on our website.
Let me just check here. I think I got most of them. And then does the Department of Health have any hypotheses about why the rate in children has increased from 3.7% to 8.4% since May? Do we know why that might be?
There's a lot of things. I think I talked about a couple of them, but I don't really want to say hypotheses because we haven't put really time into looking at those sort of things. I can tell you, it's not a percent that concerned us enough to ask for certain measures to happen, but what, what is just common knowledge that everyone can kind of think through is youth sports started to happen, so there's going to be interactions there. Sports camps, overnight church camps, those sorts of things all started to happen. And you started to have parents go back into the workforce after the stay-at-home order was lifted and as more businesses opened back up. So all of those could contribute to that age group that was probably for the early on in the pandemic, just staying home and, and not getting out of the house a whole lot.
Right. And then my last question. Do we know why the criteria for pooling testing is 3% to 5%, but that's not what we're using for school opening?
Well, a lot of it comes down to, again, this is just all new. And so the 3% to 5% again was something that World Health and CDC kind of said that's where they would consider community spread to be in a minimal category. That's not what was used to bring children back to school because again, depending on how testing's done, as you pointed out, Ms. Love, as testing criteria changes, that percent and that rate's going to change. And so we may never see below 3% until there's a vaccine. And I think all of us would agree, is it realistic to not allow children to come back into schools and to, to really reopen schools until we're at a 3% or less positivity rate? That's going to be a really hard benchmark to hit. So with it was a lot of just pragmatic public health discussion of what in Arizona we felt comfortable with, knowing how much testing we have available, knowing where our numbers were at the peak and getting them down to what we thought was reasonable, that it was a lengthy discussion between Arizona Department of Health Services and the, the health officers of what that moderate spread and that 7% and everyone's level of comfort with it. And it was really just many years of public health experts in the room saying 7% was somewhere we felt it was minimal enough that we could bring children back into schools with certain, you know, mitigation efforts in place, but it wouldn't be safe for everyone to come back and not wear masks and not try to socially distance and those sorts of things.
Thank you. Since we've talked about, since you talked about some of the mitigation techniques that are available, would you perhaps, since this is being recorded, could you review some of those for our, for the general public as to what type of mitigation techniques the health department recommends for schools?
Sure. We would certainly recommend that high-touch surface areas are cleaned probably more often than they, they historically have been. We would also recommend that face coverings are used, cloth face coverings are used, that there's ample supply or availability for students to wash their hands or sanitize their hands, that when you're able to socially distance, whether that's having less students per classroom, having the students' ability to spread out six feet apart, any of those sorts of things. Also, the typical stay-at-home when you're sick, you know, try to limit your touching of other individuals and touching your face, your eyes, your nose, those sorts of things. Those are the, the big ones for us.
Thank you. Do any of our board members have some additional questions? Mr. Evans?
Thank you. I don't want an answer for this, but I just got to tell you, and I know you already know because you've been doing this for so long, and it'd just be really interesting to hear your conversations at home because you're like, "I told them. They should, they should have read between the lines. They should understand this stuff. You've seen it so many times." But at the same time, the state and every other organization in office, actually I have a second question, I just remembered, but every, they're, they're saying what you just said, we have hundreds of people who have, you know, decades of experience in public health. They're the experts on it, right? But we can't get any guidelines or recommendations for what we should do. But everybody says you're the school board, you're the school board members, so you guys make the decisions for, in our case, you know, we have 46, 45,000 students plus all their families, so we're talking about, you know, 150,000 people that we're expected to make the decisions for. But nobody here is one of those people who has decades of public health experience, so we're just supposed to read between the lines. I don't want to comment. You actually, so I just want that to be out there, okay? So this is really hard. So, so down the road, it becomes you were more right than that district over there was more right, but neither of you have dozens of years of public health experience. So you're all kind of just flying by what you, what feels good to you, you know? Or, so I'll leave it at that. You, you made a comment really, really early on, and this is probably a really stupid question, but I just wanted to go there because of the fact that you've worked in your role in two different counties. You said, you showed the numbers of in the red zones and I had asked about Apache and Navajo counties. And the statement you made was that they're sovereign nations, which is actually perfectly correct, right? But I'm just wondering, are those, and, and I understand too, you're Maricopa. You represent Maricopa, not the state. Are those, are, are the numbers for Baba Kaviri, Tahanawoodam Nation, Navajo Nation, Apache, Hila, Salt River, are those being included currently in the state's numbers?
Yes, they are. So, and, and I just want to make sure I'm clear that Navajo and Apache, they're not all sovereign, their whole county isn't all sovereign, but there was large outbreaks on the nation that caused those to have really high rates of infection. Same with Yuma County. There was lots of infections on both sides of the border and that affected the, the county overall rate in Yuma County. So the, the numbers that come in from the tribal public health partners are also included. And, and I'll just tell you, I, I, I want you to all know that I recognize how difficult of a position you're in and, and decisions you have to make in public health. If you haven't, I really, really highly recommend check out some of our resources on our website. We, we try to give as much guidance as we can to all of you, but I think we, we just, we know that the decision has to come down to the board, similar to the fashion I work with in the county. I can make recommendations to my board, but it's really their decision on whether they do a county-wide mask mandate or, or a lot of public health decisions or things are made, recommendations to my board who ultimately has the decision-making. And I think that's the same approach that's happening with schools. But I can tell you that I think we, we worked really hard to try to come up with those benchmarks and not to have too many of them, but to have some that as public health experts we thought were really good indicators, that it was safe to start bringing students back on campus. So I would say if you rely heavily on your decision-making on those benchmarks, you know, if they're the wrong benchmarks, that'll be back on public health. But we, we really did spend a lot of time and discussion and looked at across the nation what other states were using as indicators. And there were some we liked and there were others we thought, that's just not a real good indicator to know if it's safe for kids to come back to school. So those, those three benchmarks that were landed on really, really should be pretty good indicators for school boards to, to use to make decisions, I hope.
Okay, Ms. Flanagan, so what were those states that you didn't like their bench, their benchmarks?
Well, some of them just had too many. They had several. They looked at hospitalization rates and as you can see from our hospitalization rates, as soon as our number's going to go down, those are going to go down. And we don't want to wait until our hospitals are overwhelmed to say, "Oh, maybe we shouldn't have kids in schools." We want indicators that are going to see a little bit quicker than that. And so that's why we picked some of the ones we did. We didn't, we didn't use what other states have necessarily used on things that we thought weren't a good overall indicator of what the community was looking like, but it was very specific to one, one instance, if that makes sense to you.
And which state was that?
We, we looked at several, I, I honestly, I can't remember. I can't remember, honestly.
Ms. Love? I know you had some more questions.
I have two questions. So Israel is being held up as the place who like did it right. And, you know, they noticed a spike as soon as they opened up schools. Can you speak to that? Because it seems like we're doing something completely different than Israel, but then the recommendation is to go hybrid and we're not in the place where Israel was when they decided to open up and then it led to a spike.
So I haven't, there's been quite a few studies that have come out about Israel, so it'd be better if I knew which one you saw and what you, what information you saw to, to, so we're talking the same language. But what I can tell you overall is what they've used globally to say this is really like a model country for how they handle things and how they opened back up and how they brought schools back, is I can tell you that in most of those, overall, the community is much different than what we have here in the States. You know, there were countries that were on lockdown for months and didn't have problems with it. Here, we locked down for 30 days and there's people, you know, understandably so, that were not happy, that were upset, that were, you know, having a hard time with it. And in those countries, you have mandatory reporting your location, mandatory reporting your symptoms and those sorts of things. So that's going to be a much different country than looking here in the US. I think there are lots of other countries that would be interesting and some states around the US that are looking at what other countries have done to bring their students back. And I actually think some of them are really good ideas and reasonable. They've brought back just lower grade levels, the ones that it's really difficult for K through three to do virtual learning. And they've left some of their higher grades more virtual learning. So I think there's been lots of options that, that make a lot of public health sense to me to consider. And, and those are the sorts of things that, you know, if your board ever comes up, you know, or has kind of proposals that you'd like us to, to vet through and look for other data that's out there that's, you know, scientific and, and published data, we're more than happy to do that and work with you and be your partners in this.
So had the state mandated a lockdown like some of these other countries, would we have been in a very different spot today?
In other countries or here?
No, I'm saying had our state like mandated like lockdowns, like would we be in a completely different spot and would this be a completely different conversation in terms of like reopening?
I don't know that we'd be in a different spot today, but do I think we would have been at a different spot in June? Probably. We probably wouldn't have seen that spike as large and as big as we saw it. States that you saw, saw a slight increase, but not that huge spike that Arizona saw that we got all the national attention for is because their states opened up very methodically and very slow. I think the governor was really listening to people that said, "We need our economy to get back," you know, "we need people to get back to work." And when he opened it up, you know, certain parts of the population in certain areas just went back to life as normal and, and going to dance clubs and, and no social distancing or any of that. And if you remember when that happened, there was also no mask mandates in place. So I think maybe what would change or be different in our discussion right now, if we had had a lockdown for a longer period, would just be, we'd just be at a lower plateau than where we are right now.
So there's a lot of things that I want to say that I'm not going to say. And it's not you, but you know, I just feel like Mr. Evans is correct that this decision has been put onto us and we've gotten no support from the state in handling this the appropriate way that they needed to help like handle it. And, you know, it sounds like economic needs were put before public health and now we're in this position where we have to make this very difficult decision. And we don't have to make this very difficult decision, and we don't have any guidelines, the science and the data is still out, and it's kind of like taking a shot in the dark, and this is the one thing that nobody wants to be wrong on, right? I do want to ask, because I've seen some things like in the news about hybrid models, and I've seen some things to suggest that hybrid models may be a lot more, I don't know if the word is dangerous, or may come with some more complications than, you know, staying home or a five-day model, can you speak to that? I've seen just some things recently in the news, and I'm not, I'm not fully certain why the hybrid model would be, you know, more difficult, I guess, from a public health standpoint.
I have seen that the hybrid model might be more difficult, but I didn't see it from a public health standpoint. I think when it's more difficult, it's probably, I would assume, more difficult for a school to implement a hybrid model. I think it could be potentially more taxing on teachers, and just your overall school resources and system to do a hybrid model, but from a public health standpoint, there's not a higher risk or concern with a hybrid model.
Thank you.
And I thought of one more question. As we look through our, the school district data and where we are as a school district, we also have zip code data, and many of those, we seem to have like a little hotspot, 85225 and maybe 85224 also at this point. And I guess the question is, when recommendations are being made for an entire school district, obviously all of those areas are averaged into the main thing, but we know that there are areas that are seeing a little bit more activity. Are there recommendations in any way to change the models for some of those areas versus other areas, try to adapt your system to what we're seeing in that community?
Yeah, I think that's a good question and a great point. I certainly, if I were sitting on your board, I would, I would propose looking at the schools that may be late within those zip codes, maybe you look at them differently, maybe until they get into that yellow, that some other stricter measures are in place, or that there's still continued virtual learning, I think those are all reasonable. I will tell you, it's red on the chart, but it's not red to where we are identifying it as a hotspot, so it's not too, it's not high enough for us to say it's two times higher and therefore a hotspot in Maricopa County, but you're right that on that, the benchmark scale, you do have two zip codes within the Chandler Unified that are showing red on a couple of areas.
Okay, thank you. Are there any more questions? Mrs. McGee, do you have anything? Mrs. Brunner? Dr. Castile, did you have anything?
You just sparked a thought, if, could you geocode our district without those two zip codes? Would it be, would it impact the other part of the district that are currently the green and two yellows?
Yeah, it wouldn't turn everything to green.
No, I know that one area is going to be hard to hit.
Yeah. But are you saying if I cut those two zip codes out of the rest of the district?
To see what the, what the impact is on the rest of the 80 square miles?
Yeah, we could look at that. We can do that for you, if that would be helpful.
I was just, I'm just curious, I hadn't thought about differentiating that respect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we can do that for you.
And I would, I don't know if any of the cabinet has questions?
Do any of our, oh, Mr. Narducci?
Thank you for being here, we really do appreciate it. I was wondering, within the zip codes and where hospitals are, you did say that everything is coded back to addresses, so having hospitals or elderly care centers, which you did say, our numbers look really good in those, in those facilities, are those impacting 224 and 225 in your mind?
I would have to look and see what's in those zip codes, but it absolutely could be that. We know in, early on when we started to unpack and look at zip code, that's why we changed it to city, we had to look within those cities to see if there was a long-term care facility that was experiencing outbreak, because the individuals living there, that's their home address, that's where they're going to be coded back to. Luckily, we didn't have any, we had some, the numbers would change, but they were still being either a hotspot or a non-hotspot with that information in there, but we could certainly look at what's going on in those specific zip codes and try to unpack that a little bit more.
Okay. Another question I think I had was a continuation of the board's question, I think that was about cohorting on hybrid, hybrid models. So, would you say that it's, if you can establish similar cohorting in schools is probably a better idea than not having similar cohorts? And a hybrid model may, you may not be able to have cohorts on days that kids are not in, because you don't know where they're going, they could be going to grandma, grandpa's house, they could be going to childcare, they could be going somewhere else, but on the five-day model, they would be right at school with their peers, their cohort?
Yeah, cohorting, we love in public health, that's what we use a lot in our long-term care facilities to help get outbreaks under control, so really, it's all about that exposure, and knowing if one kid is positive, but they're around the same 10 every day, that's a lot easier than if that one kid is each class period or each time around, you know, potentially by the end of their day, 50 students instead of the same 10. So, absolutely, if cohorting is possible, that's a great measure to consider.
Okay, and then this last one is a personal question, because I've talked to five of my colleagues at different districts, and I've received five different answers, and so I'm very confused. Outdoor play equipment, recess is a big thing for parents, so how often does that have to be disinfected? Does COVID live in plastics as such, and metal as such, and are those considered highly, highly touchpoint surfaces? What would the recommendation be on those areas?
Yeah, so I don't know, I would have to refer to the CDC, but what I can tell you is if you have lots of students touching them throughout the day, that's why early on you saw a lot of the McDonald's Playlands and the Chipmunks, like not having the play areas, and, but I would say there's things that you could do, certainly, given each little one, a pump of hand sanitizer on their way in and out of the playground would be helpful, and, you know, the nice thing with COVID is that it does live on surfaces for a little while, but it is, it's easy to kill as well, it doesn't take any special cleaning, it's just whatever you normally are cleaning any of your equipment and stuff with, that all works extremely well and effective for killing the virus. So, I haven't seen a lot of studies, I do know that heat, it kills it a lot quicker, so here in Arizona, that's working for us when it comes to surfaces, especially outdoor surfaces, but the CDC, I'd probably have to refer before I want to say like how often or what they would actually recommend when it comes to playgrounds, but I can imagine everyone's kind of approaching it a little bit differently, and you see the same thing with sports, how they're handling wiping down a ball, and how often they wipe it down, and what they're doing, so again, I think that's going to be, I would look at what the CDC recommends, and then just as a school board and district, what you guys feel comfortable and is manageable and doable.
And thank you for mentioning the sanitizing of the hands prior, because that's probably cutting down quite a bit right there, when we have that practice in place. Thank you so much.
Do any of our other cabinet members have questions or comments? Ms. Berry, would you go by the microphone over there? Or, oh, sorry, there's one right here.
Thanks for coming today. Great presentation. So, I have a question, so the state data shows, and then the county, then the county data shows, but on the county, the first metric doesn't show, if it's two weeks decline in positivity, that doesn't show, it only shows the cases, right? So, some people get confused with that, at least my group of CFOs get confused on that on a regular basis. How do we clarify that? Because in some districts, it could show that with a two-week decline, and so people are getting confused between that and the state data.
Yeah, you're talking about the case rates and the overall cases.
And the two-week drop, otherwise, yeah.
So, it's interesting you bring that up, we asked the same exact thing when the state came out with, it's under the same benchmark, but it's two within it, and the one with the number of cases declining is much, much easier to achieve than the case per 100,000, the case rate, and ADHS told us on a phone call, but this isn't written anywhere in any of the recommendations, so I'm just sharing it with you as, this was their kind of explanation of why they did two of those, is because in certain communities that are particularly little, very small, very small counties, it was going to be extremely difficult for them to get their case rates down per 100,000 with just a couple cases, and if you have just a couple in your population, your case rate's always going to be really, really high, so that's why they did the decline in number of cases for two weeks and the case rate, but they are taking either as acceptable. In Maricopa County, for us, we really are recommending looking at the case rate as probably a better indicator of where we're at on the community spread, certainly some school districts, they can use it because it's out there, and that's what ADHS says on theirs, but for us in Maricopa County, the way you'll see our data, when you look on our dashboard of per zip code and city and district, it's at that case rate and not the case count. If we were to look at the case count, we've been reaching that for a few months now, where our cases have been steadily declining, but I don't think, maybe a month ago, we would have said, we're looking pretty good, we're pretty happy with it, I think we're just approaching where we're saying we're looking pretty good and comfortable with it, so for us, a better indicator is that case rate per 100,000.
Mr. Rother?
Yeah, hi, thank you again for the presentation, it was great. My question has to do with close contact and the definition for close contact, because that's really the difference between when a student might be in the same classroom with a student that tests positive, and then needing to quarantine, so can you cover that one more time, because we've heard sort of conflicting, how many feet away, mask, no mask, so.
Yeah, so I'll go right back up to here, so close contact is identified as less than six feet away for more than 10 minutes, so this is not going to be, say they're in lunch line together, so they'd be within that six feet, but it's only for two or three minutes, that would not be a close contact, we wouldn't ask the student to try to remember who was in the lunch line with them. If it's the person that's sitting at their lunch table really close to them, and they were eating, that's going to be a close contact, so it all has to do with not only how close you were, but that it was for more than 10 minutes, and we actually use the more than 10 minutes, the CDC website has more than 15, it's gone back and forth between 10 and 15, we like to stay on the safe side, so we've used 10 here in Arizona, but it's really that close, and then for a duration.
And is that with a mask or without a mask?
It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. Yeah, because we know masks are extremely effective, they're not 100% effective, especially the cloth face masks, which we're really recommending, we know they're extremely effective, they're not 100%, it's not like wearing an N95.
I think Mrs. Brunner had another question.
I, Mr. Rother, just remind me of another question I had earlier, which is regarding airflow, so there were some studies that came out regarding like, I think there was like three case studies, one with a restaurant, one with, you know, like different locations, and the airflow, because this is aerosolized transmission disease primarily, right, more than surfaces?
It's not aerosolized, it's droplet, which is different.
Okay, so the studies that showed that the airflow spread, even though the people weren't near each other, what is the department's perspective on those?
Yeah, there's been more research that is academic research that has showed that's not the case, I know there's been some studies out there, I don't know that those have been peer reviewed and are considered, you know, worthy of academic journals, we've seen that, there's been huge discussion and debate, and there always is, especially with a new disease, of trying to find out how is it spread, and early on with COVID, we didn't know, they actually treated it like an aerosolized, which is like a, you think of a TB, that's aerosolized measles, just being in the same room, unfortunately, it could float over and get someone positive. So, with COVID, they really treated it like it was aerosolized until there was good data that they were seeing, that that just wasn't the case, that it took that close contact for more than 10 minutes for there to be transmission, so that's what we go with.
Oh, I thought, I saw that you wanted to respond to that, okay.
I was just going to be, I was looking at Maricopa County positive case numbers today, which were very low, 144 for Maricopa County, and I look through a lot of the data, and one of the stark things that I noticed today was that in Maricopa County, no cases for 65-year-olds and up was reported today, zero cases, first time ever in the time that I've been doing the data since early July, so I was very pleased to see that, we're making progress, we're making really good progress.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Mr. Evans?
I just wanted to thank you, because not only did you do a very helpful presentation, but you kind of gave us your personal, you know, here's what you should look for, I love more of that, but, but thank you for just really being candid and helping us to try to work through, you said a lot of, if I were on the board, and, yeah, so, thank you for the guidance, no, we appreciate it, yeah, really.
Ms. Hartley, do you have any questions for?
I don't think so, I listen to their webinar every, every week, and, you know, the information.
Microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't think that I have any burning questions, we watch the webinar every week and get the guidance from them on, you know, the mitigation strategies from a health office perspective, and talking about, you know, when the students do present with symptoms, our process for, you know, them coming to the health office, and, you know, going home, we do have steps to isolate those children, make sure that the health office personnel has the appropriate PPE, so from that standpoint, you know, we've followed their guidance almost to the T to make sure that we have those steps in place.
Thank you. Mrs. Cooper?
I have two questions if we have time, I don't know if that's on or not. What do you expect for the future? Just goes back down, what's going to happen, you know, in three months or four months, and then the other question I have is about herd immunity.
Just in general?
Just in general, no, I just, I'm hearing that a little bit, that there is, that they were predicting that, you know, you not need to get up to 80 or 60, maybe it's a little bit lower from the coronavirus, and I just wondered about that, that might predict the future a little bit too, is what I was thinking, but.
Yep, absolutely, so I will give just my personal predictions for moving forward, because that's all, you know, we really know, we can just look at the trends of what's happened, and I would expect, as I mentioned early on in the presentation, we're going to start seeing some things open up this week with some of our businesses around town, I would say that I would be prepared to see an increase in cases. Again, what I want to emphasize is what's going to be most important for us is that we don't reach a point like we were in June, where our hospitals were getting at capacity, and we see widespread community spread where we can't keep up with cases, we can't keep up with case investigations, and that's when we're hitting those thousands of cases a day, so I would expect to see some increase, and I would also expect that, and we knew this fairly early on in the pandemic from a public health standpoint, is that there's going to be, have to be some flexibility and people realizing, and the same would go for schools, I would, I would encourage you to be flexible in your planning, to think about, we're going to open up, let's not panic if we get back to red again, let's have a plan in place for how we get ourselves back to yellow, and then it's going to, it's going to be this ebb and flow in numbers until there is a vaccine, and that, and that's with any, you know, communicable season pandemic that does not have a vaccine or a solution or a treatment in place, and we don't with COVID right now. Speaking to what I hope to see in the future, I'm very hopeful, I know there's been a lot of reports that a vaccine will be ready in the fall or by the end of this calendar year, I would be ecstatic if that happens, I'm a little more realistic, I think it's going to be the first quarter of 2021 that we'll come out with a vaccine, a vaccine will be available, and from there, you know, we really start getting it out into the community and asking members of the community to really get vaccinated. You're going to see a big push in the coming months for the flu vaccine, it's going to be super important, because as we talked about, COVID symptoms are very similar to flu. similar to flu symptoms. So getting as many members of our community to get flu, their flu vaccine, is going to be super important every year, but particularly this year. We don't want to overwhelm our labs or our hospital systems with COVID and the flu. So, but you'll see, when the vaccine comes out, you'll see a big push for that. The other thing that we're going to be doing, starting in September, is a sero survey. So what a sero survey, it's a serology survey, is that we go and we kind of determine what does the immunity look like so far in our community? We know that you can, you can look at our numbers and see how many cases are in Arizona, but we also know that for every one case that gets reported to public health, some studies have seen up to 10 cases that never get reported to public health. We had ASU do a study for us. It looked like in Arizona, Maricopa County, we were a little closer to eight. So you just think about for every one person that's positive, there's potentially eight out there that are positive that never get reported, mainly because they're not getting tested. They're asymptomatic, they're, they don't think they need to get tested, or they are sick, but they don't get a test. They stay home and they stay in bed till they get better, but they never got tested. So a sero survey is going to go out there and that really checks to see how many people already have the antibodies in their system. It's a blood draw. We're working with ASU, our close partners with this, and we have picked out 29 clusters that are going to be surveyed throughout our community. There's been several other states and countries that have done this. I'm excited that we're doing it in Maricopa County. What it's going to tell us is if it comes back and says 20% of our population already is positive with COVID antibodies, and the newest data, as you were mentioning, typically for something to say we've reached herd immunity, we like to be over 80% or close to that 80%. We're actually seeing from some of the countries that had their outbreak a little earlier than the US did and have come down from that, they're seeing a really good, slow and almost elimination of COVID when they can get around 30 to 40% of herd immunity. So immunity can happen with one of two ways. You can be immune because you actually had a disease and you have antibodies built up that way, or you can be immune by getting a vaccine. So it's one of those two ways that we want to get at least 40% of our population in that category. So if the sero survey comes back and tells us, oh, we're at 20% in the community of spread, we'll know our magic number is really pushing the vaccine to get at least 20% of the population to take the vaccine. So we can reach a number where we should really start to be safe to take off our masks again and kind of go back to what our normal lives were that seemed like lifetimes ago.
Dr. Gilbert, did you have any questions?
I didn't have any questions. I just thought this was a fantastic presentation and it was very good information to help us.
Thank you.
Madam President, I have one more question. Could I ask while I have the, we have the audience here. It's not every day you get, you know, this type of audience. So back in December of 2018 and January of 2020, we had a high outbreak of what seemed like flu-like symptoms. As a matter of fact, it was even, it was even pointed out that these are higher flu symptoms than normal. We saw a lot go through schools. We had a lot of colleagues that were all down for three to five days. Was there any research on that at all as to could have that been an occurrence or could have there been some occurrence at that time where the immunity, since you were talking about the herd immunity, that there could have been some people that actually had COVID-like symptoms or maybe even had COVID at that point?
Yeah, that's a great, and that's exactly what the sero survey we hope to tell us. We've heard that from quite a few communities and particularly here in Maricopa County, a lot of people in that December, January were having the flu and pretty severe flu symptoms. And again, we know it's the same thing. When people have flu symptoms, they don't always go and get tested for the flu. They just stay home and try to get better because there's not a lot you can do if you don't, you know, catch it early enough. So absolutely, we're hoping the sero survey comes back and tells us there's a lot more people in our community that have probably have COVID and recovered fully. And so we don't have quite as many. We need to get the vaccine to, and it'll give us a really good idea of when public health can make that recommendation to our board, that it's okay to start lifting the mask mandate or easing up on the mask mandate.
Can I also ask a question as we're talking about the serology tests? We do have a spot on the Arizona Department of Health's website that talks, that shows some data for the serology tests. And my question is whether those serology tests are included in the daily reported totals and where are those, in what type of situations are those serology tests actually being performed?
So the serology test that you're seeing on the ADHS website of where you can get a serology test and the serology study I'm talking about are two different things.
Correct.
So people can go right now and get a serology test. At those locations, I would recommend looking them up on ADHS. Our community testing doesn't, we're not doing the serology test or antibody testing. But you, and why they're helpful is for reasons similar to what he pointed out and others have said is, I actually think I might have had COVID. And sometimes it's just, people just want to know. It's just interesting to know. But it can be helpful as well to let others know that I already had COVID. And it helps us understand that there's, you know, novel coronavirus is one of many coronaviruses, which you probably all know all of this already. There's SARS and MERS and all these other ones. And what we do know is they're similar to the flu. Their immunity lasts a little bit longer than the flu, which is great. Some have lasted up to five years, but we don't know with COVID. So it's really nice when people do know their status of their antibody to know if they have antibodies that are for COVID coronavirus in their system and that they don't become sick again. And if they do, if we start seeing a trend in that, we know one of two things that either happened. Either immunity doesn't last as long as we were hoping or that you can get reinfected, you know, fairly quickly and it doesn't last as long. So those are some of the reasons that people might go and get an antibody test.
Are the, I knew that.
Oh, and they're not in the daily, sorry. You can look them up on the, you can look them up, but they are separated out. They're reported separately and it's not part of the overall percent positivity or the overall numbers. They're a separate category. And when you go on the ADHS website, you can kind of see where they're.
Correct, yes. And are our blood banks reporting the serology tests? Because I know that they were in there for a while, that they were looking at that, checking blood for a while.
Yes. So any place that reports automatically to the state will report all of those and the blood banks are included in that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions? Ms. Love?
So you made a statement about like, you know, if we did go to red after we opened, not to panic and to come up with a plan, you know, for how we can get out of red and back to yellow or green. But would we get any guidance from the county about that? Because as, you know, Mr. Evans pointed out, none of us are medical professionals here. So we're going to panic, you know, because we're going to see numbers go up and our community is going to panic. So what does that look like from the county level?
So from us, what I would, what I would recommend is, this has come up with a few school districts already. The guidance that came out from ADHS wasn't really clear. They had better guidance and clearer guidance for the businesses from when the businesses move between those categories. So I can tell you, it's one of the discussion points we plan on having with ADHS when we speak with them again tomorrow. But what I would tell you is that, one, it's not going to be when you immediately hit that red, that just, that could, there could be too much fluctuation happening like that, but that it's going to be that you stay in that red for a few consecutive weeks. And we would say, similar to whatever you've identified for your yellow that you want to do, which is the hybrid model, you would move out of that model and go back to a virtual model or a model that they're not interacting together. I think some of the details in that would have to be whether you're going to do that district-wide. Are you going to look at just a zip code or an area to say, it's this zip code that went red again that kind of caused the numbers? We don't want the rest of the area that's doing well to have to go back to this all virtual model when it seems to be working really well with the hybrid. So those are some of the things to consider. But what we would recommend is when it's in the red, that you're going back to the virtual. And then when you get back into that yellow again, it's hybrid.
Thank you. I guess my other question too would be, you know, if we did have like a red zip code, right? We're still open enrollment, so we might have kids from a red district going to school in like a yellow or a green district. How would the county kind of interpret that? Or what does that look like?
Yeah, I think that's why we wanted to give the data on so many levels, is that you should be able to know from your own data that you all have, and it's not information we have, how much of that movement happens in your district? If it's a significant amount, if it's a significant amount of students that go from one zip code to all over and that zip code data doesn't really paint an accurate picture of, it's not the kids in that zip code that go to the schools in that zip code, I would probably really recommend using the data that is district-level data. We have some charter schools in Maricopa County that they have students, they have students come to them from all over Maricopa County. In those instances, I would say, you probably should just use the Maricopa County data if, you know, and then there's some charter schools that say, primarily our kids come from this zip code and this zip code. I would say, use those two zip codes. So that's information I don't know of your, of Chandler Unified, but I would say that's probably some really good information for you to take a look at and see how much of that movement happens. You know, where my kids went to high school, it was the same thing, open enrollment. I think most schools have moved towards that model. And it doesn't always paint a great picture of the zip code for that school of those are the students that it's serving.
Thank you. I have heard of one school district that had talked about the fact that if they were having a new open enrollment from a red area, that they would possibly consider having that student tested before they come into the school or as a requirement. So to just make sure that, especially if it was, this student was coming because their schools were closed and let's say we were in person and their school district wasn't. And so that was just something that I had heard another district discuss a little bit and just thought it was interesting to throw out there. Mr. Rother?
Yeah, one more question regarding students contracting COVID. So we've heard things like students are less likely to contract COVID or six times less likely to get COVID. What's the research saying on that? I know that students may be less likely to get tested just because they may be asymptomatic. But is the research on students contracting it less often than adults and what does that look like?
Yeah, so I can just show you, just looking at our numbers here, and unfortunately, we break it down to zero to 19, which includes all of those age groups. But there may be a point in time where we start looking at things a little, for schools in this category, a little differently and start breaking them down. What it, what the data has shown, again, like early research data has shown that the younger, like the kindergarten to, I think it's third, fourth, fifth grade, that area, actually is less likely to do all that transmitting. It's the older age groups that are a little more likely to have the transmission happen. It's probably some behavior related. Also could be some of just how the virus works in the little ones and how it's passed between them. So that's what it's, has shown so far. But again, I would say, we've seen some arguments for all across, you know, some saying that the younger ones can spread it more, but they don't get sick, so they brought them back to class and the older ones didn't. So it's a little bit all over the place. But, you know, what we know is the viral load in children is higher and that could mean that they could essentially spread it more easily. But we also know they're asymptomatic and that the asymptomatic spread is a little bit more difficult than symptomatic spread.
Madam President? Dr. Castillo?
Just, I wanted to clarify something you said. We get, the information has changed over the course of the last few months, what's good to do, what's not so good to do. You said it's been confirmed that it is droplets and not aerosol? Did you say it was spread by droplets mostly?
Right.
It's not airborne?
Right. The, they do not consider, so when we say airborne, it means aerosolized. So airborne, you have to remember, talking and speaking to, most of us, we would say that's, can be airborne.
Okay.
But when you talk in medical epidemiological terms, airborne is aerosolized. So when we say airborne, aerosolized, that's different. So I guess using the term airborne is the problem here because it's airborne with droplets, which are a little bit bigger and don't go quite as far in the air. If you think of a strand of a hair, of one hair, their droplets are like a tenth or an eighth of the size of one strand of hair, but aerosolized is even smaller than that, meaning it can go further in the air, but it also lingers longer, something that's aerosolized. And that's true with TB, just the regular breathing of a TB patient in the room with others that aren't. We would say if you were in that same room, you are at risk. Whereas with COVID, we're saying it's a droplet, which is a little more difficult through actual talking, speaking, eating, singing, sneezing, coughing. It takes those for droplets to form and to be picked up by someone else for, to become infectious. Does that make sense?
The World Health Organization, um, July, I said aerosols likely not significantly sourced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Just since this has been brought up, I was going to not bring it up, but since it's been brought up twice, if you go to the EPA.gov website, it actually says, and it lists all the peer-reviewed research under it, dozens and dozens of studies, that there, the consensus so far is there are reports of measurement of the virus in the air, including beyond the distance recommended by droplet transmission, physically based models of emissions of virus-laden aerosols and their dynamics, evidence of airborne transmission for the closely related coronaviruses that cause SARS and MERS, epidemiological evidence suggests, suggested a possible airborne transmission, though other routes cannot be excluded. So I think that jury's still out on this, just because we need to consider this. It's really important, right?
Yeah, and I would just say, make sure that you are differentiating airborne and aerosolized because that's a big difference because it is airborne.
And it goes beyond the six feet is what I'm concerned, like, I'm worried about the practicality of this, right, for our kids and for our staff. And so when we look at this research, it definitely is an issue about what the air is in the room, especially since we can't open windows, our classrooms don't have windows that open, even if it wasn't 115 degrees outside. And so I think we should consider all those pieces of evidence that are listed on the website as well because it is a concern even past six feet. And there has been talk about having kids closer than six feet, right? So just throwing that out there.
We do know that so many of our schools are, have not been designed for social distancing between students. And it does become a big concern with that. I do, I do recall hearing, you know, various things about further than six feet, especially like if people are running or riding bicycles even outside, that, you know, you want to have a certain, you know, more distance between them. But because our kids are probably going to be not in a classroom that is adequately at all times social distanced.
Yeah.
And we are wearing masks, it definitely is a concern. And I'm wondering if, if we could ask maybe Mr. Fletcher to talk about how are typically our units designed for the classroom? Are there multiple classrooms on the same unit? Are there, what kind of filtration are we using right now? I know that we have a big difference between some of our older schools and some of our newer schools just because of the original design configurations of the, of the site. But, and it may be hard to generalize, but please try.
Madam President, at this point in time, it's very hard to generalize because you've got systems that are roof pack units that have filtration at the unit. You have central plants that have roof filtration and then filtration going into the rooms. You have air that's exhausted into the plenum and then exhausted out. You have air that, it's, I spent 90, over 90 minutes today on the, in a conference call with our mechanical engineer, so I'm still assembling the information. What we are looking at though is, it doesn't appear that with the appear that with the aerosolized transmission, that our classrooms will be that affected if affected at all. But we don't have enough information right now. So there's a lot of talk about a MERV rating, which is the minimum efficiency rating, yada, 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 which is basically the micron level. But when you get into the micron level, when you raise the micron level, then you have a potential static pressure issue, which means that reduces the airflow over the units, which can cause additional problems. So now you're not getting enough air, plus your pumps now are working overtime. There's a variety of things that you can do. You can go to a higher filtration system like I talked. Our newer schools probably have the capacity to handle that static pressure loss. Our older schools may not. You can also put some a needle point ionization module on your fan coils. If you want to take a guess at how many fan coils we have across the district, they're in excess of 5,000 approaching 6,000. And those units range about $600 to $700 in cost, plus double that for installation, plus every six months, you have to do some sort of maintenance. So I'm really not prepared to answer that question yet. We are in the middle of it. And I will have something to Dr. Castile for the governing board by the early to middle of next week that we what we think the recommendations could be. So another example is you could do 150% forced air into the classroom or into the building. Well, you can imagine in an occupied building, now we're putting 150% constant fresh air in, we're going to hear complaints about humidity, et cetera. So we're really working through what the systems are, what they're capable of doing, what our recommendations would be to the governing board.
Great.
But anything we do, just so you know, is going to be very costly.
Thank you very much.
Frank, would you just describe the two, the two kinds of the units we're using now that purge the air?
So you have two systems that allow fresh air into the buildings. First of all, we're required to bring 15 CFM of cubic feet per minute of fresh air per occupant into every facility, every classroom. So there's two systems. One is a forced air system that it's open all the time, pushing air in. And then we have a CO2 sensor system where it senses the CO2 levels going up in a classroom, says dampeners open, bring fresh air in. We prefer the CO2 systems, but again, going back to some of our older schools, we couldn't retrofit them with that type of system. We had to go with the forced air. And our newer systems, because you have a 25% recirculation and a 25% fresh air balance coming in, rarely is the air not fresh air going into the classrooms. It's being recirculated through the plenum or through the exhaust system and then exhausted out. But it's when I got your email the other day, I had a moment like, oh, my God, because it's just not, hey, replace your filters. And if you notice at your house, if you go to a MERV 13, you will hear your system struggling to keep up with fresh air. So the balance is fresh air, the balance is getting the old air out, the balance is what's the right filtration? Do the pumps have the capacity to put up with a 15% static pressure loss? And if you go to a MERV 14 or 15 rating, that 15% static pressure loss exceeds 20%. So in our newer systems, we have a 10% override built into our HVAC systems. We don't think the 15% static pressure would be a problem. Our older schools, we know it's going to be a problem. So I wish I could give you a magic wand answer, but after 90 minutes, I was brain dead today.
Well, I know that we have schools that have been built in the last year, and we have other schools that were built in. What's our oldest one? Chandler High?
Parts of Chandler High, right?
Yeah.
The original Old Main.
Yeah. So even though we've had some major renovations and all, but yeah, I understand we have all different type systems. I mean, I think it's crazy when I have even in my own home, you know, an upstairs and a downstairs that are, you know, two different systems that require two different things and.
And your upstairs is going to be a lot more tonnage than your downstairs. I can promise you that.
Actually, the other way around.
Couldn't be because that's your hotter air.
Smaller space, too. So are there any other questions? I want to thank you, Mrs. Plantagenon, for for you coming this evening and going through all of the different things for with county health and where we are in this this whole process. And I wish you could predict the future, though.
Me, too.
So but thank you so much for for spending so much time with us this evening and answering all of our questions. And, oh, Mr. Narducci, I see you kind of waving your hand. Did you have?
I'd want to get one last question.
Yes, go ahead.
All right.
I thought we were close to.
I'm just fascinated by it all. And we get lots of questions from parents and we we've had a lot. So if if you can just give your best advice here, because we wear these masks and CDC says you wear the masks because of the airborne droplets. And if you're both of us are wearing it, we're protected a little bit more. So Dr. Gilbert's wearing his, I'm wearing mine. We may just be a little bit six feet apart, but we're a little bit more protected that way.
Right.
So if you were to look at social distancing cohort groups, and then PPE masks, we can do the washing, the hands and the sanitizing. Everybody can do that really well. Which of those has more of an impact? Because in different models we look at and different decisions that the board's going to have to make.
Yeah.
Those are all important pieces, but they can't be all done in every model equitably.
Yeah.
Right? So we have some school districts that have gone back. They've been successful and their social distancing is minimal, but they're they're wearing masks.
Yep.
And they have everything else in place. And we, you know, we see their success.
Yeah.
Other places, they've got the social distancing able to come back because of doing hybrid and starting. What's your advice on that?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. That's a great question. And we had this discussion early on in the pandemic and even when we went before our board to talk about the mask mandate, we talked about from a public health standpoint, what would be the gold standard to not have any community spread? And the gold standard is going to be social distance, if you can have that distance between people. However, we know that that's probably the least accomplishable just in the world that we live in. And so the next best thing is those masks. And I would and I would tell you that when you're looking at different studies and reports and information and data, that you would need to find a study that is looking at the distance with a mask to be able to say concerns with airborne and all of that. But I can tell you from the public health standpoint, we say maintain the distance. If you can't maintain the distance, the next best thing is the mask because it's going to provide and we've really shown this, especially from, you know, me spreading it to you, it's really protecting you pretty well from my droplets not reaching past that six feet. That's why the masks were really, you know, early on, you heard us even in public health say, we don't know that the masks are making a difference. We think there may be more concern with the people touching their face and touching the mask and having a false insecurity. But as more evidence comes out, as as things research is done, the mask is really effective, especially in protecting others around you when you have your mask on. So I would say social distancing would be number one. That's difficult in a school. I would say number two is the masks most important. And then I would say really closely to masks is the cohorting would be a really great public health measure.
All right. If there's no other comments or questions for Marcy, we'll say thank you very much and appreciate all of your help.
Thank you.
I don't think we've ever clapped for a presenter before, have we?
Yes, we have. Yes, Mr. Evans, we have. So I guess the question is whether we have any comments between board members about our our presentation and what some of the comments that were made this evening and what we're looking at, I guess, moving moving forward. Mr. Narducci, I'm going to put you on the spot. Do do you have, I guess we were we were talking this evening, she mentioned that she didn't really mention the handwashing as much as I thought she would.
Right. But I think, yeah, I think that's unknown now is that the 20 seconds of handwashing and sanitizing is much needed. As you know, we've have sanitizers placed in every single every single classroom, additional ones in every single cafeteria on stanchions so that we can sanitize. One of the things that it was great to hear was that at recess time in elementary, we have built in that they will wash their hands before or sanitize before they eat lunch, after they eat lunch, and when they go out to recess, when they come back in. So those are all areas that that we've already looked at. And so that's kind of nice to hear that that's another way of keeping things disinfected is by not having the having cleaner cleaner hands and practicing good safety there. So but it was nice to hear the priority status of some of those because it's hard to do some with the without the other insert models, too, especially when it comes to the mask wearing. We can all do that. We all have that as a part of what we do right now. And students that are in in schools right now, because we do have under the executive order about 2,000 kids in elementary schools, I can speak for that. Dr. Gilbert can also speak to that. And they're they're following those those pieces. And they do have they do have masks on and they're washing their hands frequently. And and it's working even with our little ones. For some, it's harder, but it is working with some of our little ones, too.
Okay. And as she talked about social distancing being the top part of the top priority, and I guess could both you and Dr. Gilbert kind of talk about what abilities currently we we have for that social ability? I'm sorry, I was going to say social isolation. I'm sorry, social distancing.
Sure. Dr. Gilbert, I can start.
At our schools.
Okay, it's going to look a little different from secondaries to elementary simply because we have 31 elementaries. And some of our higher elementaries are at 1,000 students and some of our lower elementary schools are at 500. So it's going to look different at each one of those campuses. The one thing that we have impacting us right now is I'll just do some elementary by the numbers, just so that you have a better idea. We have 14,400 students in our virtual classrooms right now. The virtual classrooms were the classrooms that were going to come back to in person when the when the governing board directed that it was ready to do, but based on the safety measures. But we do have something different this year. We have 5,000, 5,463 students that are in the COA or our Elementary Connect program is on Chandler Online. Those 5,000 students were to come back at the quarter, whether it be first quarter, semester, third quarter, or at the whole year, they could stay there. And the parent has a choice a little bit more as to when they want their child to come back at the quarter breaks. So with that, I'm going to give you just a little bit that the elementary numbers of the 14,400, which are in our virtual sites. If they if they were to come back to school, we'd have a very good shot at social distancing a majority of our classrooms. So our by the number are we have 923 total sections of K6. And our kinder first and second grade are probably have the best opportunity with just the students that are in the virtual now. Remember, I said 5,000 some odd chose COA. So this is just their story. They have a good shot at doing that. So where where we fall a little short on the social distancing would be specialized sections. Our special our students receiving special services, 117 sections of those at the elementary, all of those could be social distance if they when they if they come back. There's there's no reason we couldn't do that. So that's an important group. We have 117 classrooms at the elementary that have specialized services for students and self contained classrooms. So besides that, at 81%, 18 students or less, we have a better shot at getting closer to the six feet. Of course, we're talking about a setup in a classroom, you know, starting up on one wall and ending up at the other wall. It isn't a standard looking sized classroom like you see on the media where when they talk about social distancing, you see a standard classroom, that we would have to remove a lot of the furniture, which our classrooms already have done. Our principals have already been working with that to make sure they're social distanced. So we have a for elementary, our primary grades with the numbers we have right now, the majority of our classrooms are 18 or less. We have a good bulk of them at 19 to 22, which is only four more students. But when you talk about six feet here, six feet here, they would be social distanced, but it may not meet that six feet. And those classrooms that would have a little bit of a harder time social distancing are at the the third grade and the sixth grade levels. So those are where we have a little bit more of a bulk of students in our schools right now, but that they may not have chose COA as much as other grade levels have. Okay. So either way, if we 18 or less, we have the predominance of sections being able to to be able to go back in social distance. At 19 to 22, we're talking about maybe close to 200 sections that would be able to come back in social distance below six feet, but we'd still get social distancing. Remember the CDC's guidelines for social distancing is three to six feet. So I would imagine schools that are back full, like some of our charter schools and some of our school districts that moved forward with back back in full, they're not meeting the six feet. I just don't know how they could unless their classrooms were designed to be one and a half times bigger than an average classroom, which is 30 by 30. So our biggest areas would be specific sections. And so I would look at about 12 sections. Now, remember, that's out of 923 that I would have a hard time of social distancing and I would have to do something different. But that doesn't mean that we couldn't add something different for those sites.
Okay.
So again, the elementary stories may be a little different. Our numbers are just a little lower. And we are spreading kids out among 31 schools. Going to be a lot harder for the Pattersons, the Exeers, the large enrolled schools, the Independences, the, you know, to rigs those types of schools because they have more students. But our cafeterias, even when we've set those up, they can be social distance. We just have to add more staggering to the lunches and spread lunches out a little bit long farther. If we were back full, if we were back hybrid, we could we could social distance every single every single group. There's no concern with any single section that we have at elementary.
The information for the secondary is pretty simple. We have large schools. And although we have a number of students that move to the online, we still have large schools in our high schools and our junior highs. So social distancing is going to be difficult for us, even when we look at certain models of what we're going to do with students. So as Mr. Narducci brought up, the possibility of a hybrid, ultimately, at the secondary, one of the issues that you have that you really have to look at is the numbers in a class, as well as the number of times students may be changing those classes. And what does that look like? Although we have things in place for how you would come out of your classroom, the direction that you would move, you know, as you're moving to classes, addressing where you would eat lunch, not just in the lunchroom, but utilizing halls, utilizing the outside space, there are times that you can address some of the social distancing. But because of the volume that you have on a campus, it's going to be difficult when you when you look at that. In a hybrid model, depending on or depending on what model you go in, you could reduce the number of times where students are engaged, depending on what the passing periods look like. Currently, the the schools added more lunches to the day so that you didn't have as many students at lunch at the same time. They staggered getting out of classes so that not all population is moving at the same time. That was the plan of what to do in moving forward. So I think the the biggest piece of what would have to happen at a secondary school really is the focus on how the population moves, how much of the population you'd have on the campus at any given time, what are your classroom sizes look like in order to address that. So for example, if you went and looked at a hybrid model to where you would be splitting the population on a campus, so now you take the campus instead of it being 3,000, it's 1,500. With that, you're looking at how would you address the number of students in a class? You'd have to look at how you would split that population so that you'd have a reduced number in the class. But you're still going to have issues of social distance because you still have a large, a large school size. So it's those type of things that you'd have So it's those type of things that you'd have to address and look at how you're going to mitigate, again, movement, interaction, those type of things on a secondary location.
If I could just add one more thing.
Yes.
Ms. Mazzan. I had mentioned my information was without the COA kids, so our kids that are on Chandler Online. Once that 6,000 students do return though, that would be if you're looking at all the information, that would change the social distancing sections I talked to you about. So that would be a few more of those sections would be filled and they would be higher than 18 once those came back. And that would be at quarterly breaks. So we do have some preliminary data on how many students would return at the quarter, but we'd have to reassess that based on different needs of the community.
Dr. Castile, did you have any other, would you like to make any comments concerning all of this?
No, I know that Mr. Narducci and Dr. Gilbert had been discussing this based on our benchmarks. We prompted the discussion with the board and wanted to give you folks an opportunity to consider.
I guess there's another one. And Ms. Hartley, I'd like to, I don't know if you can get a microphone, but can you go through what, just kind of briefly as to our protocol, our health protocol, what we're going to be anticipating at the schools? I guess a little more specifics on like when, if, well, it's more like when a COVID case does crop up, depending on whether it's staff or students, how, I guess, kind of the procedures and how that will be handled? Who gets notified? Who, how is that done? Is it by letter? What information might be communicated? Who might be looking at, I mean, specifically in our schools, even though we got some information on who will have to be quarantined, I guess, what does that look like in our schools?
Well, I can start with the student who is in class and becomes sick. They would, you know, go to the health office. We have protocols in place to make sure, and as it stands right now, any one symptom that is COVID related will send the child home. And we do have it set for the 10-day period unless they do go get tested and that test comes back negative. Now, I know that you guys can make the decision if you want to be more lenient on that, but right now we do follow that 10-day rule because without a test, you really can't know whether they're positive or negative for COVID. So we have our health assistants and nurses. They have tracking forms that they're going to be tracking when these students go home sick and if they end up testing positive. And then, you know, if we do get a report of a positive case, whether it be the county contacting us first or the parent contacting us first, we then in turn share that information with the county. And they really will be the ones who outline what that looks like as far as who gets contacted, who was considered in close contact, and then if we need to notify maybe more of a classroom or a whole school. So they really do guide us in that.
So I've heard some people who've, like, when there was somebody that tested COVID, positive for COVID, and they contacted all the individuals that were in the building and all that, but people that weren't in the building that day were not notified. And I guess the question becomes, I mean, some people didn't like that situation, but others were like, well, why should that person be notified because they weren't in contact with that individual in that facility at that time? So I guess the question is, is how do we get people to understand what, who is going to be notified? And it seems as though everybody wants to know, but they really don't need to know.
Right.
And how do we explain that to individuals?
Yeah, I mean, when we look at each individual case as it comes in, we truly do look at, you know, what the exposure was. Was it in close, were they within six feet of each other? Did they have masks on? Were there other people in the room? We look at all those considerations that would warrant either a primary exposure or what we would call a secondary exposure. So when the county looks at who gets notified, you know, if we have primary exposure, that obviously is a phone call or even followed up by a letter to say that those people will need to stay at home for the next 14 days and monitor their symptoms. But with a secondary exposure, somebody might have been in the same room but didn't meet the criteria of a close contact exposure, we still may make the decision to notify that group that was in the room to say, just in case, there was a positive exposure so you can, you know, continue to monitor your symptoms. However, they wouldn't be required to quarantine for that time.
Okay. Thank you. And how do we, I think there's also been some, I guess, confusion as to what exactly our rules are for staff and for students, mask wearing, not mask wearing, and what to do. I guess, I think there may need to be more communication. I think there may need to be more communication to our staff to let them know really when and how and who should be wearing a mask on site. That there are, there's a perception that if two, maybe two people or three people are working on a project outside, they don't need to wear a mask or something along those lines. So I don't know if we should, if we need to, you know, provide some additional communications or little videos or some type of thing to let people know where, what should be done and what they can and can't do.
Yeah, I can speak to the videos. I am working with HR and our communications department about putting together videos that kind, and age-specific videos. So, you know, for our littles and then going up through the ages. And then also for our staff, we're working on a video in conjunction with Dignity Health to make sure that we cover all of those things, you know, that we think that everybody hears all the time, but, you know, appropriate mask wearing and, you know, appropriate social distancing as far as how to tell, you know, how far you are and, you know, the things that Marcy mentioned, not eating lunch together and, you know, all those different things, proper hand hygiene. So we do plan on implementing those videos so that way we can educate as well as to why it's important.
I was wondering if we could actually get the specifics of what that looks like in like a document, not just a video, but like, here's the criteria.
Oh, sure.
Because there definitely have been reports from the different sites and we were just told that distancing is the number one thing.
Right.
And we have no excuse when it comes to just staff being in the building.
Right.
To not be distanced, right? And yet that's not necessarily always happening. So, you know, I think why not err on the side of caution where you keep your mask on unless you're the only one in the room, you know? Because at some point someone may have to walk past you or, you know, whatever. Use the same bathroom and walk in one minute after you or, you know, whatever it is, who knows? And if we don't have kids in that space at that time, there should be no reason for us to not share that, right?
Right.
And I think some staff members, as much as they, you know, want to be close to the other staff members, they want to be safe, right? And it puts them in an awkward position when it's not communicated well because they don't want to have to be the bad guy to say, hey, can we spread out? You know, and if it was from the top down, I think it would help make the culture clear, like this is normal now until when it's not.
Yeah.
Whatever that is, I don't know. But I have heard that from multiple staff members that they'd really like to see some cut and dry information spread to everyone so that they can feel safe and they don't have to be the bad guy to tell someone like, hey, you're too close or, you know, can we not have this meeting in person when it could just as easily be done on a Zoom or a Google Meet or whatever?
Sure, absolutely. There's a lot of resources we can utilize to get more of that information out to staff, absolutely.
I was also going to just kind of make a comment. We know COVID is going to pop up in our schools, whether it's through a staff member or a student or even a visitor onto the campus. There's no doubt that's going to happen, but the biggest question is, and the biggest thing is, how do we respond to it? And how do we mitigate it so that it has the least impact on anybody else within that school or within the district? And I think that is truly the key to have strong protocol in place so that we know exactly what is going to happen when this occurs. It's not if, it's when. We're going to be having to deal with COVID for a long time. And I think that we have to be, we have to be ready for it. And we have effective techniques to mitigate the spread. And we need to use everything in the toolbox to make sure that that happens. But that's just, I guess, my comment. I hope, I hope everybody actually agrees with that because it is, but it's really dependent on an aggressive response and a thorough, aggressive and thorough response to whatever, whenever we get a case popping up. So I would, I would actually, I do think that since we are looking at being so incredibly close to the metrics, that I think as a board, we probably need to talk about at perhaps a meeting, a different meeting as to what our reopening is going to look like. I think that, I think that I would like to see if we could perhaps get a thorough kind of briefing from staff to see, you know, should we be bringing kids back in a hybrid model? Should we be bringing younger students back first? Should we, and what does that look like? Dr. Castile, do you, do you have any idea when you, your staff might be possibly ready to perhaps present something?
There's a tremendous amount of discussion that's been going on, like I said, when the metrics, I understand they're supposed to improve again and they're posted tomorrow. We just felt it was a responsibility to at least consider it. It's based on the hundreds of emails you're all getting and we're getting on the topic both ways. Said it before, it's a no-win. We have parents that don't want us to open and parents that want us to open. So some parents don't feel heard and we wanted to be transparent. And if the board would like a series of options, the administration will commit to the time to be prepared for that next week. So there are options with the primary to phase them in. Part of the schools with the fact that they can disaggregate the red, geocode the red areas, if that impacts anything, we have a staff survey. That survey data will certainly enlighten us. So we're work at the pleasure of the board.
So we can't vote, but I would like to hear comments from the board as to holding another meeting next week to talk about this.
I would love to hold another meeting, but I do have another question after other people have a chance to speak for Ms. Hartley.
Okay.
So I'll hold it.
Okay, I'll make a note.
And I want to ruin the mode.
David wants to talk. Oh, David and Laura, okay, both have questions, okay, for Lindsay. But Lindsay, your comment on next meeting next week?
Sorry, I forgot, I need to move my mic down. I'm open to having the conversation, but I'm not hearing anything here today that would make me say like, you know, I'm ready. I'd like to see a plan and I'm not seeing that. So, I mean, that's.
And I think next week would be to talk about the plan.
Yeah, that's what I'm just waiting for is like, what's the plan?
Right, right. And, you know, I agree, I think we need to see, have a plan and know what that plan is and where we're going and be able to discuss that. Mrs. McGee?
I have a question for Mr. Narducci. When you're talking about being able to, for the most part, social distance the virtual students, is that a hybrid model?
No, if we, we have, we've run plans since June. So whatever the board's preview is, we, with the task force, we've narrowed down, we've narrowed plans down. We, the numbers I gave you with the majority of our elementaries being 18 or less is in the, we could fully bring some back. In the primary grades of the elementary school, a lot easier than the intermediate. We would have to work with specific sections that are over 25, 26, 27 because we do have a spattering of classrooms at schools that do have higher enrollments. If we were to bring everyone back, if we were to bring a hybrid back at any point, and we have various models of hybrid and we've narrowed it down, we can bring everyone into a hybrid model. We would meet the social distancing, we would still meet the masks and we'd meet everything else. The only thing that we may not meet is the cohort because in the hybrid, you're going to have a cohort that's a little different in your A group than your B group because of the days that they're alternating being at school. But the hybrid would be reducing your numbers down to 50% that come in. We would better be prepared at quarter when the kids from COA and those parents that decide to come back in a hybrid model because that's going to bring a load of about 6,000, 5,000, 4,000 students back to the site-based classrooms if those parents make that decision at quarter.
So I guess my point is that because we're still in the yellow, even if we could 100% social distance every single classroom with the virtual students, bringing them all back, we're still in the yellow, so.
Correct. The yellow says hybrid.
We can't do it, right?
The yellow, based on the recommendation of Maricopa County, those are recommendations for those metrics, would be hybrid.
Mrs. McGee.
That's what I'm saying.
Mrs. McGee, it's a guideline because you have districts that have brought all the kids back. So you could, that's, that wasn't what we had been discussing, bringing all of them back. You have the potential to bring them all back in the elementary because many, most of our classes are 18 or below. So if you hybrid them, you're going to have nine one day and nine the next day.
No, I understand that, I understand that. But if we could social distance all the virtual students in that elementary.
Yes.
By utilizing extra space or whatever, that's not a hybrid model? Bringing them all back, or is it?
No.
We can bring them all back, not hybrid. We could just bring them back.
Okay, but so I guess my question is, even if we could social distance all the elementary, okay, the virtual ones, that's the green or not? Do you know what I'm saying?
I think, I think I understand.
You're saying it, basically it's, you can do what you want, they're just recommendations.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we wouldn't have to be in the green to bring them all the virtual elementary back.
Correct.
If we could social distance them, we could still be in the yellow.
Correct.
Correct. But let me answer your question specifically.
Thank you.
Our best chances of social distancing all sections at elementary? Our best chances of social distancing all sections at elementary, especially when you're planning on COA coming back, is a hybrid model because then you can get your six feet social distance. What I'm saying is a majority, a large majority of our kids could come back fully and still be social distanced in the primary grades of the elementary, a little bit more so than the intermediate.
If I might, if I might add, I think one important piece as to your question, and I hope I, I've, I've heard it right. When we're talking about the hybrid model, we're talking about bringing groups of students back at a certain time. So at the secondary level, if we were talking about a hybrid model, I would be splitting the population of every school so that I would only have half of that population on a campus at any given time. But when you look at what the hybrid model, which is based on the benchmarks that are out there, if you look at hybrid, there's nowhere in the hybrid that says automatically that you're splitting your population. That's what we're saying our hybrid would look like in Chandler. The hybrid model that is on the benchmarks talks about masks, talks about social distancing, those type of things. Mitigation that you're doing on a campus is what it looks like. They're considering a hybrid. But for us, when we talk about hybrid, we're really talking about how many students we would have on campus as well as the other mitigating things that we would do on a campus.
And Mrs. McGee, I don't know if I got your answer, whether you would be willing to talk about this at another meeting next week? Oh, would you be willing to have another meeting next week to talk about this? And plans?
I would be willing if I'm available.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And Mrs. Brunner? Yes, okay. So I, would we do it, is Wednesday good, Dr. Castile? Should we?
Is all, are all five board members available?
Are all five board members available next Monday? I'm sorry, Wednesday, Wednesday, sorry. It's, it's, that would be September 2nd. Good, good.
So we know about it, just because I don't have my work calendar in front of me. I want to say yes, but as soon as I say yes, something.
Okay.
We'll hope to confirm it and maybe another four o'clock, whoops.
Four o'clock maybe? 4:30, would that be better for you?
Four is okay.
Four is okay, okay.
We will confirm it with you, but we'll look forward to something next week to, and we'll rely on Mr. Narducci and Dr. Gilbert to give us a full briefing. And we'll have Lindsay here as well.
And we'd like to hear about survey results that you, you've been doing. And then if Mr. Fletcher has some information on air quality, shall we say? You had a question, Mr. Evans, for, okay, then we'll go to Laura because, or Mrs. Brunner, because she had a question for, for Lindsay. Ms. Hartley also, since David's got him off.
Oh, okay. So I guess my question was, have we considered any other possibilities for the district? For example, in another district, even now when it's basically staff members coming in, maybe half the staff, that they're, they're taking temperatures of the staff members. And then they are filling out, they have a little QR code. You scan it and you fill out the little Google form to indicate that you're not having any symptoms. And then where are you going in the building? So that if there is a breakout, like there was in, in a neighboring district, the entire front office building had to be sent home and administrators had to come from other campuses to cover, even with those mitigating factors. So I was wondering if we've considered stepping it up a little bit to prevent those kind of things from happening at the sites?
Well, I, I think that's, yes, we've considered all those options. I think aside even from the temperature screening at the beginning of the day or when people come on campus, what's even, you know, more relevant in what you said is the, knowing where people are and being able to track, you know, what classroom they're in, especially if we are going to be moving into different classrooms or through hallways. So I, I, you know, we have discussed those things. There is technology out there. That technology is very, very expensive. But again, it, to me, it's more of a technology thing. I, I don't dispute what it does, but just having the capability to put that technology in place.
Are you saying because of the thermometer?
No, the tracking tool.
Oh.
We do have all the, you know, touchless thermometers. We ordered those early on. We got even some more, those PPE kits that came from the county. All of each had one. So we do have quite a few on campus. But when we start talking about thousands of kids and staff potentially coming back, the resources to take a temperature with those, you know, would be pretty, pretty great that we would need.
And Mrs. Brunner, right now, what we did is, you can't sign onto a computer unless you read those and click that you understand or agree.
And does it ask you where you are going to be? Maybe we could just add, I'm not saying to put a tracker on everybody, you know, but I'm saying maybe we could add a question on like, what rooms will you be in today? Like just their classroom? Are they going to be in a communal area? Are they going to have a meeting that they have to be at? Or is that going to be virtual? Like, just so that, it makes it a lot easier in the long run when the inevitable happens for us to know what the heck happened and who to contact.
Mr. Evans?
Okay, Ms. Hartley, first of all, we don't really know each other, so please get, get other people's advice or get them to buzz in because my questions can be kind of stupid. And this is not an inquisition, so this is not really directed at you. But you brought up something a little earlier. You were talking about when a child presents, as we were talking about earlier with Ms. Fannigan. So my first question is, if a child is sent home and parents are asked to get a test because it looks like they have symptoms, are parents obligated to give you the results of that test? Or not you, but the school?
Right, right, yep. So.
The health department, the health.
We cannot ask the parents to get them a test. You know, we can put out guidelines that suggest that they call their healthcare provider or that they can, you know, go to any of our community resources to get tests. So we provide that information to them so they can find an easy way to do it. But we can't make them go get a test. And we can't, we can't truly make them tell us to. And that's where the back and forth with the community reporting is so important.
Right. So if a child goes away, doesn't come back to school for 10 days, 14 days is probably what the guidelines say, and you, what's the timeline for the public health department then to try to get that feedback if, if they had taken it, if they had gotten a test done? I mean, there's, it's probably, I think she said 14 days, but that sounds a little bit optimistic, to be honest.
To get the test result back, you mean?
Back to, back to the health office at the district.
Yeah, that.
From public health.
Yeah. Testing turnaround times have increased dramatically, you know, over the last three weeks. So we are seeing quicker turnaround times, but you're right. If you look at the time it takes to get it to the person and then to the state and then back to us, you know, we could be looking at that 10-day period of symptoms. So, you know, from a school district standpoint, we really just need to encourage parents to, to be transparent with us so we can work with them and make sure that, you know, we're not exposing other people if their, if their kids are sick.
Right. So, okay, let me go back to that. Child goes away and you haven't seen that child in five or six days now. And then other members of that classroom, potentially staff or the teacher in the classroom starts presenting symptoms. They maybe get a test, maybe, maybe not, maybe give the feedback. Maybe you got to wait for the state or for the public health department again. Now, when do we actually say, oh, we, I mean, it seems like it could be 30 days before we know there's an outbreak in one classroom that happened beginning 30 days ago because we can't get the data back?
Right. So regardless of the positive tests, we would look at our, you know, our tracking tools for those students who are out sick and what they're out sick with. And if we had five other students that started presenting in that classroom with, you know, with symptoms, that's where we bring in the county regardless of any test results to make sure that we're doing the right thing because, again, they're COVID-like symptoms. So we have to treat it as if it's positive until we know it's not. So we would take those additional steps to contact the county and say, you know, we, we have a cluster of illness here. You know, what are our next steps? Because we may not know whether they're positive or not, but we do, we would know that they were ill.
Times, but, okay, so we go to the county. But then again, the county has 100 districts and how many classrooms that now they have, do they have the capacity?
I did ask this question in a conversation that I had with them just yesterday. I, I talked to them for about 45 minutes because those were my concerns as well. And they have indicated to me that they have increased their personnel to handle, you know, the, the district's need of that support because that was my exact concern. And they said they have, they have increased that support for us.
Thank you, thanks.
You're welcome.
Great. You know what? We're going to take about a two-minute break in case. And we will come back and start the regular board meeting and as, as soon as possible, please.